Good evening, sir. Good to see you, sir. How are you, sir? You never change, you never age.
Oh, no.
Tell us the secret.
No, I keep aging. I feel my age.
Wow, plenty of hands.
Did you just... Did you wait for... You want to be last today?
Good evening, yes. Yes, yes, he said.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You can ask her to sign you.
Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence regular meeting for the city council. Today is Thursday, November 6th, 2025. Pursuant to chapter... Pursuant to chapter 20 of the Act of 2022, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person at the... So we are at 165... Oh, 165 Crawford Street or remotely. There's a link for the meeting, one provided to anybody that requested. This... This meeting will be also transmitted live through the Facebook Lawrence City Council page, as well as the YouTube Lawrence City Council page. Madam Claire Rocco.
Councillor Levy?
Present.
Councillor LaPlante?
Present.
Councillor Luzon? Councillor Del Rosario is noted as absent. Councillor Marmel?
Present.
Councillor Reyes?
Present.
Councillor Vice President Infante?
Present.
Councillor President Rodriguez?
Present.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Now, join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Switzerland, one nation on the ground, unity and justice for all.
Right, councillors, we have an item that is out of... On the old business. And if there is no objection, I would like to go with the item, which is item 13724. The approval of mill bond purchase of real estate property on Andover Street. John Lavoy, the superintendent... The superintendent of the Greater Lawrence Technical School is here with us. So councillors, that is any objection. It's on the old business.
A point of prompt intrigue, are we going to go through the normal agenda? I realize you're looking with us like the public participation, the rest of that first?
Yes. I lost that. So councillors... So councillors, can I get a motion to approve minutes from September 2nd, 2025, September 18th, 2025, and September 19th, 2025? Can I get a motion for that? There's a motion to... There's a motion on the table, properly second discussion. That is none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Madam Claire, please call the roll.
Councillor Reyes?
Yes.
Councillor Marmel?
Yes.
Councillor Del Rosario was noted as absent. Councillor Luzon? Councillor LaPlante?
Yes.
Councillor Levy?
Yes.
Councillor Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez?
About yes. Now, we're going to public participation. The rules for public... For public participation are as follows. You're going to have two and a half minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, you're going to hear a beep indicating that you still have 30 seconds. Please refer to these councils at home. So the first person that we have is H. Malley, name and address for the record, please.
H. Malley, 53 Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. We, the citizens, in this important month of Thanksgiving, we are grateful that we have the best police department in the nation. Lawrence Police Department with the impeccable leadership by Honorable Chief Morris Agler, doing excellent job to protect our citizen. Lawrence Police, this union of pride and honor. Because of your excellent job and your hard work, Lawrence is a safe city. We wish the best Thanksgiving for Lawrence Police Officers. Lawrence Inspection Department, one of the best inspection department in the nation. We must hire more inspector. Million thanks to our DPW worker for making Lawrence a beautiful city. Lawrence Public School with the impeccable leadership by Honorable Superintendent Ralph Guerrero, moving forward. Lawrence Teachers, thank you for excellent job. We are proud to support your union. Because of you, Lawrence will rise again. We are proud to support our brave veterans. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your sacrifices. We must hire three new position in our Veterans Department. Lawrence always strong. Lawrence always unite. We pray for the safety of all police officers and the first responder of the fire department with the impeccable leadership by Honorable Chief Delaney, doing the best job. We wish the best Thanksgiving and excellent celebration for all police officers and the first responder. Thank you for giving a safe city. Lawrence Police, a shining superstar in the sky of Lawrence. Happy Thanksgiving.
You, the next person that we have is Councillor LaPlante, Mark LaPlante. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Councillor President, members of the council, Mark LaPlante, 29 Derso Ave, here in our city. Just as we've been doing the LSP or the Lawrence Square project, today we had a very meaningful, and I think, event where we were able to unveil the... This new sign for Sergeant Albert J. Carter Jr., his very quick stories. He died during World War II. He was saving some of his buddies who were caught in the line of fire and brought them out and got the Bronze Star. An amazing sign. Please go visit it. I think it's in a beautiful location in councillor Vice President Infante's district, at the intersection of Andover and Newton Street. We have two more coming up. As you know, we're doing this now every Thursday, 4:00 p.m., not Thanksgiving, but every Thursday at 4:00 p.m. So the next two, the next one is Jacob or Jake Cohen Square on November 13th. That's next Thursday. That is at 4:00 p.m. at the corner of Franklin Street and Common Street. Again, Franklin and Common, Jake Cohen. Very quickly, he was a centenarian. He was 100 years old. He was a World War I veteran. He had a claim to... He worked for the city for a number of years. One of the few people that actually worked for the city and received some sort of recognition. I think he was either a painter or carpenter of some sort, and then also a World War I veteran. And so people back in the day decided to give him a corner, and that cornered on Franklin and Common Street. The next one would be on November 20th. Corporal Robert Di Corvo. His story is amazingly sad story, where he was in the Marine Corps, he was in Vietnam, and he suffered through PTSD. Came back home, was assigned to go to a hospital in Pennsylvania, then was missing. Was missing for a number of years, and they said that he was AWOL. I come to find out, he was killed at the side of a road, on a Pennsylvania road, one day in... In the 1960s. And they finally, through the course of DNA, were able to exhume the body and did DNA testing and knew that it was actually him, because he had a bulldog tattoo on his forearm and was able to identify him. So to wrap that up, November 20th, at the corner of Hampshire Street and Alder Street, Hampshire and Alder, and we'll be unveiling that sign on that day. And as always, I invite you, councillor president, members of the council, and the public as well to come by. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that we have is Rich Russell, councillor Russell. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, councillors. Rich Russell, from north of the river at 34 Cross Street. I must tell you... I'll let all of you know that I have closed out my OCPF account. Therefore, I'm no longer a politician. Hence, I don't have to be a nice guy anymore. I don't... You have been warned. Years ago, there was a song titled "When", with the refrain, "When will you be mine?" Well, I've taken the liberty to change refrain to, "When will the truth be told?", regarding a bunch of questions that need to be answered. So, when will the truth be told about the status of the investigation into Jennifer Pagan and her transgressions? When will the truth be told about the reason Elcat lost the right to broadcast council meetings? And why they lost access to Channel 8 on Xfinity? Where does the money for the public access channel go that Elcat should get? Where does that go? We pay for it. What does the city do with that money? When will the council chamber be finally finished? Who requested it? And how much is this project costing the city? Oh, who authorized it? Request an authorization of two different animals. Is there a rationale in raising the area the council desk sits on by about 10 inches? Is the real reason that some of you councils can finally look down on those that you come before you? Did the designer of this upraised platform realize that there should be several ramps there for safety reasons? Will a throne be brought in? Hopefully, to the completed council chamber to be used by whoever is going to give the mayor's state-of-the-city address. And finally, when will councillors publicly announce how much money they receive from political action committees? PAC money goes to show that any politician, no matter how ineffective they may be, can be elected. I am not a fan of PACs. I will close in saying, politics is a rat race, and right now, it appears that the rats are winning. As always, thank you for the time to address you with my concerns.
Thank you. The next person is Rocky Morrison. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Rocky Morrison. I'm here regarding Irving Street, the parking, but I might be a little early, because I know you guys are going to vote on that. I'm just hoping within... You can pass that right away, instead of waiting 30 days. Instead of waiting 30 days, because we've been a long time waiting for this non-parking from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. So I'm just here for that. That's all. Thank you.
All right, no problem. Thank you, everybody. All these names are going to be submitted for the record. Right now, we're going into business. Councillors, if there is any objections on the old business, we have item 13724, which is the approval of the mill bond purchase of the real estate property located on Andover Street. This item was put together back then in 2024 and authorized by the council. John Lavoy, the superintendent of the Greater Lawrence Technical School, is here with us. So any objection to take this item out of the old business? All right, without... Without no objection, I will move on to request the council to suspend the rules to be able to entertain this item. Councillors, we need a motion to reconsider first. Anybody on the Republican side might be able to do so, and Madam Claire, I believe everybody was... Everyone on the Republican side can make this motion.
Motion to reconsider item 137-24.
There's a motion to reconsider. Can I have a second?
Second.
Properly second discussion. Are you none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, now, Rocco, Madam Claire.
Councillor... Anna Levy?
Yes.
Councillor LaPlante?
Yes.
Councillor Luzon?
Yes.
Councillor Del Rosario is noted as absent. Councillor Marmel?
Yes.
Councillor Reyes?
Yes.
Councillor Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Councillor President Rodriguez?
Yes. Now, we have item... Item 13724 here with us. So, Madam Claire, do we proceed to allow?
So basically, there's a request to reconsider. Yeah, Mr. Lavoy is here with us tonight. If you want to have him just present. He had previously authorized a bond authorization, which is a significant process, but part of the bond authorization restricts the actual usage of the funds. And he was hoping to propose different usage. So the bond has already been approved, and if he can modify the usage. So tonight's vote would be to allow him to modify the usage, if that's how you choose to do that. So what you really needed, I guess, Councillor Infante's motion was to reconsider. The first motion, we need to suspend the rules so we can reconsider it after. That's the suspension of the rules. So it's slightly backward, but if you maybe make a motion to suspend the rules, which was allow for the reconsideration, and then have that vote, that would be... Just a motion to suspend the rules, which would basically ratify your motion, yeah.
All right, councillors, can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend our council rules.
In properly second discussion. Are you none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam Claire, please call the roll.
Councillor Reyes?
Yes.
Councillor Marmel?
Yes.
Councillor Del Rosario was noted as absent. Councillor Luzon? Councillor LaPlante?
Yes.
Councillor Levy?
Yes.
Councillor Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Councillor President Rodriguez?
About yes. Now, it's in order to have a motion to reconsider. We take notes on the previous motion. So the superintendent is here today, so let's allow him to speak on this item so as to why we should be modifying the authorization for the... For the loan that we previously authorized. So, name and address for the record, please.
John Lavoy, Superintendent, Greater Lawrence Technical School. Good evening, everybody. Chairman Rodriguez and city council members. First of all, thank you for allowing me to present this proposal to you at this time. And I did give you... I gave you a handout that I'm actually going to read from follow-through so that to make it easier for you to follow what I'm saying and have a better understanding of what we're trying to do. I'm going to read a particular motion that at some point, if you would agree to this, would probably need to use in order to make it a legal approval based on our bond attorney's recommendation. So Greater Lawrence Technical School is requesting the city council to amend a previously authorized $4 million bond initially approved for the acquisition of the Elks Lodge property located at 652 Andover Street, Lawrence, Massachusetts, so that said funds may instead be used for the design, construction, furnishing, and equipment of an addition to the district's existing facility located at 57 River Road, Andover, Mass. Set amendment to be consistent with the intent of the original authorization, which was to expand the district's medical and health-related educational programs. And further, that this amendment shall not increase the total amount of borrowing previously approved. So the funds would be used. First of all, let me say that the reason we're asking for this change is after a couple of years of trying to work with the Elks to purchase their building, we have not been able to locate a new facility for them that was acceptable to them. So in lieu of that, we've decided we didn't feel we could wait much longer and have come up with a new solution that we can still meet our objectives. So the funds will be used to build an addition on the west side of the school, which I provided you a drawing so you could get a sense of where that is in those documents you have. It would provide the space needed to expand existing health programs and pathways. This initiative is a critical component of our ongoing effort to prepare students for high-demand careers in the healthcare sector in the industry that remains the leading employment growth area in the Merrimack Valley, as identified in the Mass Hire Northeast Regional Blueprint. This new facility will provide the space necessary to expand our existing health programs and introduce new pathways that respond directly to the workforce need across both clinical and administrative healthcare fields. So the expansion, the new credentials are pharmaceutical technicians, certified patient care technicians, medical billing and coding specialists, emergency medical technicians, radiology certification, licensed practical nursing program. So this... Our growth and our vision is this would be part one of our expansion for our programs. And part two is we're in working with Lawrence General Hospital to obtain... They have offered us the fourth, half the fourth floor at the Holy Family Hospital for us to start an LPN program. So we're negotiating and working with that as well as part of this initiative that we're working on. In addition to creating new credential pathways, this expansion will allow us to increase the number of certified medical assistants and certified nursing assistants graduating each year, provide students with a wider range of hands-on clinical training opportunities, broaden access for local students seeking healthcare careers without the need for costly post-secondary programs, strengthen the partnerships with our area hospitals, clinics, and long-term care facilities. This initiative directly supports... This initiative directly supports Massachusetts workforce priorities by addressing the region's top employment needs, healthcare. By expanding our programs and credentials, Greater Lawrence Technical School will continue to play a pivotal role in developing a skilled, compassionate, and job-ready healthcare workforce for our community. In conclusion, your support will ensure that our students in the Merrimack Valley region are well-positioned to meet the growing demand for qualified healthcare professionals. Together, we can expand opportunities, strengthen the local economy, improve the health and well-being of our residents. We have also have signed a, an agreement with Northern Essex and Regis College to form a consortium to support the Lawrence General expansion, so that there'll be direct pathways for our students to go from Greater Lawrence through Northern Essex and into Regis College. We already have a dual-credit program going with Northern Essex, where our students are taking coursework that's being approved for college credits and can be used towards their associate's degree in nursing. This expansion will only strengthen that opportunity, as we work with Northern Essex in a very close relationship. I think that this will also allow us to increase our student enrollment by about 250 students, because between this program, we're also looking at, along with this particular expansion, we are going to start a public safety program, which is Chapter 70 program, which is a new title, but a new program, where we will be training students for, to be EMTs, to help also in that area, but also train them as firemen, police officers, court officers, and anything in the public safety sector within the state of Massachusetts, so that our, this initiative will not only expand the health programs, but also expand the public safety sector that is also the third most needed profession in the Merrimack Valley right now. There's a huge shortage in, in that sector. So, after over a year of research and work, we've worked and met with all of our police chiefs, fire department, Lawrence District Court officials, state police, in determining what the real need is before we've determined to go along this venture. So, we know it's a change from our initial, initial request, but in, in order for us to, we would utilize that money in a way that would be well-aligned with the original intent that you approved. So, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilors, any questions? Counselor Marmo?
Good evening, Superintendent. I appreciate seeing this come before us today, because I remember back when I was a committee member, I tried advocating for the LPN program to be added, especially if it was, I think back then, Middlesex Community College was the, probably the only nearby school that was offering that program, and it was mentioned to me that the data did not provide that this, this particular position was in demand, but I'm glad to see that the data has shown otherwise. Do you happen to have numbers to show how many students request this program as their top choice, and then how many students do not, do not get selected and are left with their second and third choices?
So, let me address the LPN situation first. So, back when we were looking at, and you were talking to us about starting an LPN program, the hospitals were not hiring LPNs. Since then, the Board of Nursing at the state level has changed some of its regulations so that LPN nurses can perform a lot of different duties at a higher level, and so now the hospitals are looking in desperate need for LPNs. They are now hiring, we've been working with Lawrence General, we've met with them a few times, they are going to partner with us in making sure that our, our training and our coursework aligns to what the real needs are within the nursing industry, particularly for those coming out of a vocational setting. So that's, I think, the big thing that's, has made the change with regards to that. In terms of student interest, last year, we typically take in about 30, between 28 and 30 students in medical assistant, and about 25 in health assistant, and last year, for 30 seats in medical assistant, we had 150 students pick that as their first choice. And in health assistant, we had about 70 students looking to enter that as their first choice. So, we continue, that continues to be our highest-demand program at the school, and we just did our preliminary, the students just finished their first step of exploratory, which is a one-day visit of each shop, and now they are going to select six programs that they're going to spend the weekend, and again, the health programs are by far the highest-demand programs to, to explore.
And my last question is, and I'm for this, I am happy to see anything that would help expand opportunities and access for students to continue to be able to receive their top choice. To me, that's super important, especially for students that are specifically wanting to enroll at Greater Lawrence Tech to study a specific program. So it's unfortunate for some students that don't get their top choices. If and when approved, when would this project be completed?
So this, our goal is to have the totally completed with approximately two years from now. So we would be, not this September, but the following September, looking to open the new public safety program and start utilizing the space for expansion of the health programs. So, it'll be a transition in terms of some of the pathways. So right now, we would be able to, once we open, we'd be able to double our freshman class, and then each year, again, double, instead of 30, we'd be taking in 60 students to increase the opportunities. And we continue to build a stronger partnership with Northern Essex, because a lot of our students, we find in those particular programs, go on to college and pursue their nursing degrees or other pathways within the health industry. That is where we find the largest number of students continuing their education at the college level, both two-year and four-year programs, and having the opportunity to have a pathway with both Northern Essex, where that then could also lead to Regis College, which they would be able to have an opportunity for dual credits as well. So, it's just going to strengthen, this opportunity is going to strengthen the ability for students to continue their education and service our, particularly our, our own community, where there's desperate needs, particularly as we try to, as Lawrence General tries to expand their facilities.
Question, I'm so sorry. Are, are we going to be able to have our students involved and be part of the process and hire them for any of the work when it comes to the electrical, the plumbing for this new addition?
Absolutely. Electricians, plumbers, maintenance service people would all be, and we've talked to Diane Richardson, we've been meeting with, who's the new president of Lawrence General, we've had a few meetings with her, and we've talked about other career areas we have that would be extremely helpful for them, and, and the careers we were just talking about, the construction industries, the maintenance industry, IT, our business tech program. We've already had conversations about how that, we can strengthen our relationships in those areas as well.
Thank you so much, Superintendent.
You're welcome.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
All right. Let me see, let me see. Counselor Plant?
Thank you. So you brought in a little bit of the public safety through you, Council President, the public safety discussion. Remind me again the tie-in between the public safety portion and what the loan authorization is focused on, the healthcare. So I just, I wanted to make sure I got that.
Yeah, so though they're, we're doing both programs in unison, in terms of the building, the structure that we're putting up, that you see in that drawing, is this two-story structure. So the way we're going to be allowing this happen, so when you think about bringing in 200 more students, it has an impact in a lot of areas of our school beyond just those seat vocational programs. It increases the need for more academic teachers, the need for more classroom space, and so we've been, we're, we are working on a five-year strategic plan to ensure that our expansion has a positive impact on all areas of our school, and that we can plan, as we start to grow and bring in more students, that we can support both students, staff, and space. So the, the vision and the plan that we've started working on is, by opening up this new addition, and the second floor being for the medical assistant, what we would be doing is moving our existing medical programs into the new space, and the new programs and the expansion of the curriculum would happen at the hospital. So what that does, it then opens up space for us to add on more classrooms, because by bringing in another 250 students, we're going to need more classrooms and more academic students. We're also in the process of putting in a second cafeteria, which is about halfway there now, that'll allow us to resolve the, some of the crowding that's happening in the cafeteria, because we've gone from 1,200 in the last 12 years to 19, to just under 1,900 today. So we've expanded quite a bit, and our hope is to continue. But as far as public safety, a year from next September, we hope to open that program.
In that building? In the new building?
In the new building, the first floor of that building will be that, and part of what exists now, a place, we have a garage area to put an ambulance and a fire truck in to do the training.
So, just so I have a understanding, can you provide for me right now what you believe the motion should read?
The motion should read what I put in the document, that you have in the document? Yes. So right now, we're looking to access...
In the, in the blue?
Yeah, at the very top of the...
Oh, I see, thank you.
At the very top.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that would be the motion that, if the council, and you can show it to your attorneys and ensure that you're comfortable with it, if you'd like, but we, we work with the bond attorney in developing the language that was needed legally to make this happen.
So just so we're clear, and the reason why I was asking the public safety question is because that, none of that is really touched upon in this document.
Yeah.
The motion...
The funds will only be used for the medical programs, not for the public safety.
You just gave us background information regarding other activities at the school, the impacts it's going to have elsewhere, and that's, that's more...
Yeah.
Kind of context of, of what this is going to impact the school, but this is not directly related to the, to the motion that we're going to vote on for the $4 million bond authorization that's going to shift it from the Yelks to an expansion at your complex at 57 River Road in, in Andover. That's what this is all about.
Yes.
And in this motion, we're talking about specifically why you're doing it, and it talks about the healthcare portions.
That's right.
Why, so just so we're clear. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilors, any questions? I hear none. Councilors, can I get a motion with the specific language that was provided to us, and can we read the, the language, please?
Motion to approve the request of the Greater Lawrence Technical School District to amend the purpose of the previously authorized $4 million bond initially approved for the acquisition of the Elks Lodge property located at 55, 652 Andover Street, Lawrence, Massachusetts, so that said fund may be, may that be designed, sorry, my mic keeps going off.
Yep, sorry.
For, in construction, furnishing, and equipment, and equipping of, of an addition to the district's existing facility located at 57 River Road, Andover, Massachusetts. Said amendment to be, said amendment to be consistent with the, with the intent of the original authorization, which was to expand the district's medical and health-related educational programs, and further that this amendment shall not increase the total amount of barber, barber, borrowing previously approved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion. Properly second discussion, Counselor Plant.
Very quick question, quick answer. Where are we on the other member communities? Have they already adopted this language?
So, at this time, Andover has approved, North Andover have, has approved. I presented to Methuen yesterday, they're going to bring it up at their next meeting, but it was very favorable in the questioning and the, and the response and the comments. They have a policy, they won't vote on any amendments until the second meeting.
Thank you, Council President.
All right, any other questions? Thank you for providing us with a tour, as aware that one is going to be used when we went over for that, for the other program that we just, you just launched.
Thank you.
The aviation program. Thank you, Counselor Marmo, for helping out on that program. At this point, I'll call the questions. Others in favor, please say aye. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Um, this is on the motion to approve. Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor Plant?
Yes.
Counselor Luzon?
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario is noted as absent. Counselor Marmo?
Yes.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Counsel President Rodriguez?
Well, yes. Motion carries. So, we are proceeding with, with committee report, and we're going to jump into the Budget and Finance Committee. Madam Clerk, Madam Chair, from the, from the Budget and Finance Committee?
Thank you. Under the Budget and Finance Committee, we have item 418-25, authorization to expend $405,377 towards the PSAP 9/11 Support and Initiative Grant, and that was sent up to the full council as a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
So motion on the table, properly second, by Counselor Levy. Discussion. There is none. Others in favor, please say aye. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor Plant?
Yes.
Counselor Luzon?
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario is noted as absent. Counselor Marmo?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President, um, Counsel, Counselor Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Counsel President Rodriguez?
I would, I'm affirmative. Item 419-25?
Item 419-25, authorization to expend $23,846 towards the fiscal year 2023, STORE, which stands for, where is it? I just want to, Sex Offender Registry Board, Address and Address Verification Program was sent up as a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
There is a motion on the table. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Properly second, discussion. I hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Marmo?
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario is noted as absent. Counselor Luzon? Counselor Plant? Counsel Levy?
Counselor Levy? Yes.
Counsel Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Counsel President Rodriguez?
I vote, I vote on the affirmative. Item 420-25?
Item 420-25, authorization to expend $23,846 towards the fiscal year 2024, STORE Grant Address Verification Program was sent up to the full council as a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
There's a motion on the table. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Properly second, discussion.
Discussion.
Counselor Plant?
Thank you. I, if it's all right, I didn't want to ask them three times, I just wanted to ask a question to Director Shepherd, welcome through you. Can you just give me a paragraph, so we can all hear it, as what each one of these grants will do for the, for the status of our, of our city?
Sure. Good evening, my name is Rosa Shepherd, Director of Support Services at the Lawrence Police Department. The first grant is a grant that we have been receiving for a few years, and is related to our dispatcher department, which is the 911. This grant usually pays for the software and some of the equipment that goes directly to this department. It doesn't go to the, the police department just for the, for the dispatcher. It will not pay for, for anything else, but again, it's just for the... But again, it's just for the software to maintain the 911 and, and equipment for the, for the department. And it will also pay for the salaries for the dispatchers. For the sex offender grant, that's a grant that again, we've been receiving for the, for the past four, five years, if I'm not mistaken. And this grant is specifically for the verification of sex offenders, which is level one, two, and three. It will pay for the overtime, for the, for the overtime, for the sworn officers for the police department.
Third one?
Oh, the third one. The third one will be, it will be for FY '24. It will be the same thing. It will pay for the overtime for the, just for the sworn officers to do investigation and added verification for sex offender in the Mary McCarrian.
My overriding question, at least on the first one, is when someone calls 911 with this new system in place with the upgrades, what is that going to mean for the average person who is calling for 911? Are we gonna see a noticeable difference when, God forbid, we need to make that call, but if we do make the call?
It will be, it will, it's a continuation of the service that we offer right now with the software. It's just a continuation of the, the software. It will not be any difference as of right now.
So nothing's happening faster, there's no police responding, there's nothing that's in the software that, that accelerates or coordinates or keeps track of. I'm just trying to figure out what it is that, why are we taking this? What is special about this money that's going to make the system better? And maybe it's not a lot, but it, but it's, maybe it's something.
Yeah. But it will, with the software, it will be for us to be in compliance with the state and for, even for the cybersecurity as well, for the, for the 911 department. As well, it does, it will, it will help with the, with the, with the, with the phone calls, with the, with the call to 911 department. It will be quick and again, it will be, it will keep continuing the services that we provide right now.
So if we did take this grant, we would essentially be losing the services we're providing right now? That's why this grant's important? So it's not so much we're getting new stuff, it's keeping what we are having? Is that the benefit of this grant?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That, that makes sense. And is that same logic holds true for the Sex Offender Registry Board information? Is that just continuing on the programs that we have? And if we don't have this grant, then we're gonna lose whatever the program offers? And you know better than I what that offers, but, but we're gonna lose whatever that, whatever that is. Is that, should that be my understanding of what, why these grants are important?
We will not lose the services whether we have this grant or not, but it's definitely just an incentive to the police officers to go and to assign a specific police officer to continue the services.
And the reason why we're having this grant is if we don't have this grant, would the police be able to do that?
We still, we need to, we need to do that because then we need to comply with the state of Massachusetts.
We still have it, so what's the difference? Why are we taking this grant?
To be, I mean, besides to be in compliance, we have, there's a program in the state of Massachusetts that we have to be in compliance.
Well, we're getting the money, we would, you just, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be argumentative, but I just want to understand better. You said, no matter what, we're, we're by law required to do it. So we're gonna do it, whether we get the grant or not, we're required to do it. So now that we're getting the money for the grant, are we just, is that, maybe this is it? Are we freeing up other monies to be spent on other things? Is that what that would be doing?
Yes, it would definitely help with overtime, with the police department.
Just general overtime across the police department?
General overtime, yeah, because this is only to pay overtime on the this program, no salaries.
Got it. Okay.
Councillor President.
Thank you.
Councillors, we are going to- Let me have a question. Related to Asia?
Yeah.
Related to Asia? All right, councillor President Infante?
Thank you. Through you councillor President. I'm a little confused here because the, the, the times that we have previously spoken about the Sex Offender Registry of the city of Lawrence and I'm, I'm not sure if it's still on the local channel or not either, but I recall one statement or one concern being consistently brought, brought up. And it's the lack of, it's the list not being updated regularly as it should. So I understand the whole, the, the whole overtime and, and I'm having an issue also with, with the Lawrence Police Grants that seem to, majority of these, of these monies are going towards overtime, 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 all the time, it seems like. And I just want to make sure, if, if this grant gets approved, that we're actually updating those lists and keeping it up to date because what's the point of paying for overtime if we have the discussion again? And we're here sitting again saying, why is this list not updated? What's the issue going on?
But before I came to, before I, we apply, I applied for the grant and de-ass that question because I know it was, it was asked that question last year. And I was told that yes, it's being, it's up today. Just when you go to the actual website, it will take you to the Massachusetts State website where it actually shows the, the update.
So, okay, so that's a problem right there. That's an extra step for our community members when we're, we're promoting it as cityoflawrence.com or Lawrence Police. I, I don't know what the actual URL is, but cityoflawrence.com is just say. They should be able to have that updated list under the city's website, under the Lawrence Police Department. They shouldn't have to go through an extra step to go through a, a whole state agency list. This is why, this is why this funding is going to be approved for overtime. So if we're, if we're gonna use an officer for overtime, then I'm, I'm expecting for our constituents to have that service provided to them easily, not having to go through obstacles. And I hope that makes sense.
I do understand.
Thank you.
You, you actually mentioned that a lot of the grants that we, we bring to the, to the city council is overtime. It's because the grants are specific for overtime. That's why we-
Thank you for clarifying that.
So I do understand. So I mean, a lot of the grants that we apply for specifically for overtime and if, of course, for, for, if it is for equipment, I, I will come back and I will mention that it's equipment. But most, half of our grants is based on overtime.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure, if, if we're spending over $23,000, if we're allowing over $23,000 that the officer that is assigned to this is actually updating that for our end and that the police department works with our IT department to ensure that, that our residents have an easier access to that list.
Your concern was brought up before, before I put that in the, in the memo.
Perfect. You guys are 10 steps ahead. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, councillors, we have a little situation here. And we need to recognize and rectify that, what happened. So item 314, 318-25, item 419-25, as well as 420-25. Those items are technically at the committee level, but due to a confusion and, and other circumstances that happened within the city council's office and at the city clerk's office, we had those items by mistake at that, at this, at this committee, at these, at the full council. But they are tabled at the, at the ordinance committee, at the, at the budget, at the Budget and Finance Committee, sorry. So essentially, we, we can provide a, a solution for, for it since we have choppers and if there is no objection, that we can actually pull it from committee and take a vote again on those items. Due to the fact that they already been met when it comes to the public notice, 48 hours ahead of time. The clerk have a quick explanation as well and/or we just do the regular process as we should and go back to committee and table it at the, at the, at the committee level and deal with it at the next meeting. So it's up to the council what we wanted to do, but I wanted to pass it over to the city clerk to give us a little bit more explanation as to what happened.
I want to just take full responsibility because it's not anything to do with your own office. Your office is wonderful and my own staff is wonderful. What happened is the documents came to my office that normally don't, anything would be tabled at committee would usually not come through my office at all. But because your office was closed, which it should have been, I, I just looked quickly. I presumed anything that came in as that package was what was going up to committee. That's the standard procedure. I didn't look. They, three documents all do say tabled. My understanding is that they were tabled at the budget committee level. I put them on the agenda, so that is 100% on me. So they are here at this level at this time. So as you noted councillor President, the public notice requirement has been met. So if you wanted to deal with them tonight, they've been, the public's been notified. It's up to the chair of the committee. If she has more thorough discussions she wants to have at the committee level. You did have a pretty thorough discussion tonight. So however you want to handle it, if you want to send it back to committee or I would recommend what you suggested, though, just taking a, a vote, even if you took the items as a block, to pull them from committee just to belt and suspend as any procedural matter that might be missing. But if you want to take a vote to pull the three items from committee, that would help sustain the vote that you just took this evening.
Any objection to that, to do that?
Can I add something?
Sure. Councillor President Infante?
Thank you. Through you councillor President. I just want to quickly add. So the clerk doesn't fully fault herself, but in this, in this, first, I, I was not available to chair the, that Budget and Finance meeting. So I would have remembered something like this. But second, the, the committee of reports sheet does have the vote in favor of marked off, but it also has tabled. And I think that's where the confusion lies. We weren't sure which one was which and because it was on the agenda, I assumed to proceed.
So councillors, to move this forward, I will entertain a motion if we prefer to suspend the rules and pull it from committee or the items are at the committee level.
I've got a question, real quick. I think I know the answer, just, just so we're clear. So the, the committee did meet and they'd have a discussion on it, right?
We, we did not. Not on those items.
The committee met.
They were on the agenda.
It is on the agenda, but did not choose to, to have a discussion or do anything?
We chose not to have the discussion because the police department were not there.
But, but it was on the, but you had the opportunity. That's all I need to know. Thank you. I'm good.
So councillors, entertain a motion to, to suspend the rules and pull item-
To suspend the rules, second.
And to pull item for 1825, for 1925, and for 2025 from committee. Can I hear a second?
Second.
In properly second discussion. Madam Clerk, we need six votes.
Yeah, just, yes, to suspend the rules and pull from the committee would be six.
Please call the roll.
Keep the alternate, alternation going, whatever the, councillor Reyes?
Yes.
Councillor Mamo?
Yes.
Councillor Del Rosario is noted as absent. Councillor Luzon?
Yes.
Councillor Plan?
Yes.
Councillor Levy?
Yes.
Councillor Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Councillor President Rodriguez?
I vote on the affirmative. Motion carries. Councillors, can I get a motion to take it as a block item for 1825, for 1925, and for 2025, motion to approve?
No, second.
There is a motion to approve.
Discussion.
Properly second discussion, councillor Plan.
I'll be voting in favor of this. And I, I think what I want to do is provide a distinction as to why I voted yes, as opposed to sometimes I vote no on these things. I think that we went to the committee, the committee did what the committee did and that provided us the opportunity. If however the, the situation changed and the committee never met and never had a discussion on it, I would be voting no on this matter. But since it did vote, that it did meet and they chose to do whatever they, at least they met, I'm voting in favor of it tonight. Thank you.
No problem. Any que, any other questions? I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye. Or Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Levy?
Yes.
Councillor Plan?
Yes.
Councillor Luzon?
Yes.
Councillor Del Rosario is noted as absent. Councillor Santiago? Yeah, I'm sorry. Councillor Mamo?
Yes.
Councillor Reyes?
Yes.
Councillor Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Councillor President Rodriguez?
I vote on the affirmative. Motion carries. Item 421-25, Madam Clerk from the Budget and Finance Committee. This is the order of public hearing.
Item 421-25 Fiscal Year 2026 Property Tax Classification was sent up to, to order, to be, to order a public hearing on this item and I make that as a formal motion.
There's a motion to order a public hearing, properly second discussion.
Let's go.
Councillor Plan?
When do we expect to have the public hearing on this?
On the second meeting of November.
The next meeting. Thank you.
Can I just, who, who's talking to that? I apologize.
Taking.
Can I hear a second? Councillor Reyes. Any other questions? I hear none. All those in favor, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Levy?
Yes.
Councillor Plan?
Yes.
Councillor Luzon?
Yes.
Councillor Del Rosario is noted as absent. Councillor Mamo?
Yes.
Councillor Reyes?
Yes.
Councillor Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Councillor President Rodriguez?
I vote yes. Councillors, if there is no objections, I would like to ask to take it out of order. Item 413-25, which is the review amount of real estate abatement for disabled veterans. There's any objections?
This under?
I, doesn't, this is under the ordinance committee. There is no objections.
Looking for the number.
Councillor, councillor Plan, on the chair of the, of the ordinance committee?
Looking for the number.
For 1325.
Because you gotta turn the page.
Turn page three. Stop.
The ordinance committee met and sent this document up, this is document 413-25, which is to provide for a real estate abatement for disabled veterans. Now, I don't see this on the sheet, so I'm gonna go through memory here as to what the numbers are going to be. I believe we doubled on-
From 1,020,000.
There's two different portions. I believe the disabled veterans between a 10 and 99% rating was moved up from 400 to 800. That's number one. And the people with 100% disability, it went from 1,000 to 2,000. But I believe it doubled both the people under 100% and the people at 100%. So that, the motion is to have a, a, order a public hearing. That's the motion.
Oh, and the motion is to order a public hearing?
Councillors, can I speak?
Stop for one second. Let me stop for one second. I don't know if this needs a public hearing.
My question to you is, this, this is an ordinance change?
I'm sorry, and I don't think, and I, I, I'm withdrawing the motion for the public hearing. I think we just need to have, just a simple vote on this. I would also ask, and I know that there's been some talk about this, is that there is a request to make this happen sooner rather than later. So it takes effect in time for the-
Fiscal year 2026.
Current fiscal year, so the abatement process, they can qualify for it in January, I think it is. And so I don't know if we can, by the council, do that. It may be a question that the assessor has the authority to do. I just don't know if we can push, make that happen. But we can put as a motion to recommend, oh, there he is. So maybe we can ask him.
If the vote take place this, this time around this year, they, they will, it will take an effect for next year.
Through you, may I ask the assessor that question?
Of course.
All right, this vote tonight will take effect for fiscal year 2026. And it's not just for 10% veterans, 10% disability, or 100%, it's 22 across the board. So it's gonna be uniformity. It's for every single veteran that owns a piece of property in the city of Lawrence. It's not just for 10% or 100%, it's across the board. So we're doubling everything and the fact of the matter is, our majority of veterans are 10% or 100%. So the clauses are extreme. It's, they're, they're very, very large. But our veterans are 10%, which is 400 to 800 and then 100%, which is, I, I provided the numbers for, for everyone. And the numbers are 63 veterans will receive the maximum benefit provided if this council would approve it tonight. And the number runs from the exemption amount of the overlay account from the assess's office is gonna go from 36,000 to 74,000.
Right.
But-
Councillors? I just want to make sure we're clear on this. The breakout to what it, the impact to the disabled veterans, are there's two different figures, right? So between 10 and 99%, the new number would be $800. And for those who have 100% disability rating, that new number is $2,000. So the vote that we're taking tonight, and help me with this assess, chief assessor, the motion before us should be to what? To, to, to codify those numbers? 800 for the less than 100 and 2,000 for the 100%? Is that what, is that what the motion should be to make, to effectuate the change?
The motion tonight is to adopt clause 22J. I've sent out an email to everyone in the city council. I've sent out an email to everyone in the City Council. You must adopt clause twenty-two J, which doubles the amount of the exemption in the city of Lawrence for all veterans. And that was, it's going to double the exemption amount for everyone across the board. Unilaterally, so it's not going to be ten percent, a hundred percent. It's everyone who's a veteran is going to get double the maximum benefit. So if you guys can take a vote for, to adopt clause twenty-two J, and that simply just increases or doubles the exemption amount for everyone across the board of veterans.
So very good. If you don't mind, Mr. President, I'd like to ask one more question. So when we had the discussion during the ordinance committee, it was really separated between two, first of all, it was disabled veterans. What I'm hearing today, it's not just disabled veterans, all veterans or just disabled veterans?
All veterans.
Disabled veterans who are, it's disabled veterans, ten percent or more
Right.
who own property in the city of Lawrence. There, we have the number of sixty-three who qualify. And what we're doing is just doubling their exemption amount. And we needed to do more research as to the fact, is it just the ten percent or a hundred percent? And after speaking with the state, they said, no, it's, it's across the board. It's everyone who owns property in the city of Lawrence, whether it's, you know, I can go on, on and on as far as the exemption amount as one limb, one arm, who qualifies or doesn't, it's across the board, Councillor.
Again, I'm so sorry about this, Chief Assessor, but we're saying it across the board. And when I say, is it, is it for all veterans? If you served and you're a United States veteran, and you're living in the city of Lawrence, and you own your own home, and you're not disabled, do you qualify for this abatement?
No, you need to have ten percent.
All right.
Or greater.
You need at least ten percent disability.
Thank you.
Yes.
Make sure we're clear on that, this across the board, that just, and, and there's a distinction between a hundred percent and those less than a hundred percent, correct?
Correct.
Distinction. Is that right?
One hundred percent, yes.
Okay.
If you, if you are ninety-nine
Yes.
from ten to ninety-nine, and then you have up to eight hundred dollars. If you are one hundred percent, and then you're going to have two thousand dollars.
Right.
Correct. And it takes effect after this vote. If you approve it, it's going to be fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Next January.
So that means this January, Council President, that the people are going to be able to, January twenty twenty-six, they're going to be able to see that change and apply for it. Okay.
They can apply for the abatement during the time of the abatement period, which is, I believe, February first to February twenty-eight.
I'm prepared to make the motion, and hopefully it gets seconded. And, and it sounds like it's very simple to adopt clause twenty-two J of the Mass General Laws. Do I need to, do we need to specify the numbers, or is that self-evident?
That's something that we need to specify on the motion.
I, I would recommend that you adopt twenty-two J, a hundred percent, which is going to double the exemption amount and affect the fiscal year twenty twenty-six. And that way, I can speak with Madam Clerk tomorrow, and we can send it to the state.
So I got you. The, the motion, yeah, I know exactly what you're saying. So the motion sure said twenty-two, adopting twenty-two J with the amount that is double the current amount that we have in the city of Lawrence. And that way, the amount will be that and then the
That makes sense. So I'll make a motion that we adopt clause twenty-two J, doubling the amount that our disabled veterans are able to receive for a real estate tax abatement.
Second.
There's a motion on the table, properly second, discussion. So anybody that have a question, we have the, the Veteran Services here, the Director of the Veteran Services. If anybody have a question when it comes to the records, the numbers, or if we, if you need to request any number, this is the, he's the proper person to ask.
Council President?
Councillor Luzon?
Just, I just wanted to add that the Veterans Department should make sure that all the veterans in the city get correspondence.
All the veterans that are disabled?
Yeah, well, yes, the ones that qualify. But I'm assuming he's going to send a general mail.
To let them, to let them know about the change to it so they can come apply for. Absolutely, yes.
Wait as soon as possible, just they can get ready for the next year. Thank you, Director.
Yeah.
Council President?
Councillor Vice President Infante?
Thank you. If, through you, Council President, would Council of Plan consider adding, adding that as an amendment to the motion to just, I, it's not that I, I know you don't get it, but just to make sure that this letter gets sent out to, to our veterans.
Yes.
If, if you would permit me to ask the question. Do we, the question here is, we are going to codify this and mandate that you send the letter out. I mean, I want to make sure, do you have the money in your budget to be able to send these letters out?
We, we will be able to send.
Would you be able to do it?
Yes, we'll be able to send.
Now, the Council wants, the Council Vice President wants me to say yes. If she does, she'll probably make a motion. Would you have, would there be any offense taken if we put this as part of the motion?
No, no, no.
Okay, I accept it.
And may I add, it's, it's, sorry, but oftentimes we hear Department heads say, when we request correspondence to be sent out to residents, and they stand here and they say yes, and yes, and yes. Then later, when we're out speaking to our residents and our constituents, we find out otherwise. So I just want to make sure, I know you're responsible, I just want to make sure that it gets sent.
Yes, is, is, and, and thank you you bring that up. And if any veteran is watching right now, this is one of the reasons why it's very important for them to keep their address updated with us, so we can send this information out. Information vital like this one, or any changes on benefits, it's not because we want to know where they at, or, or we want to be, as they say, nosy. It's because when information like this comes down, we would like to, like, send that out immediately. And when they don't have their information updated, sometimes we get mail sent back to us that the address is not updated.
Thank you for that.
But we will work, we will work with the Tax Assessor's Office, because they got their information of who has applied before, and we will send a letter out to them.
Right. An email and a phone call, that's also work.
Yes.
Council President?
Councillor Luzon?
Just to add to that, also, there's radio programs that will welcome your participation with this kind of information. But just make sure that the message gets to them. That's my concern. Thank you.
Yes, Councillor.
Thank you, Council President.
No problem.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I have a question. So does the veteran need to be living in here in Lawrence, or be living, or just only to be the owner of a property and be rented to somebody else?
That's a good question. It's a home, a, a, a property that you own or you rented?
I, I, I believe they need to be the primary residence to apply for it.
Good question, though.
Correct. You need to be the primary owner, and you have to live at the property.
So do you have, through you, Council President, do you have a kind of documentation who's been living in the property? Or, because we know that there is so many people that are the owner, but they don't live in here.
Correct. They have to fill out the application. It's a, it's not a privilege. It's, you know, you have to fill out the application. And once you fill out the application, we'll look at your residency. And the assessors decide at the end of the day that you qualify. So you must own and occupy the property, whether it's a single condo, two-family, three-family. That's how we will, will determine if you own the property. And it's, it's, you know, as my CFO used to say, Mark I know, it's you have to, you know, it's, it's a honor system. And I don't think a veteran in the city of Lawrence is going to, you know, forge anything or, or lie about anything. I think we have a long history of the veterans that have applied, who vote, who are registered voters. So we do have a ton of resource in our disposal in the assessor's office to make sure that we hold these folks that apply accountable.
Okay. Through you, Council President?
Council Levy?
So you're going to send this information, see we approve it today? We're going to send the information tomorrow to the state, that is what you say? And how many days do you have for, to come back and that the state approve?
It's overnight. So I've been communicating with the state. So the question was, were we going to grant this for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-six? And, you know, this is a program that is going to benefit those folks that, you know, have done everything for us. So the state said, if the City Council adopts this, the night of the hearing, work with your city clerk to send us the information, and we will put it in our DOR gateway system to make sure that everyone is going to benefit one hundred percent. So it will happen overnight, and when folks get their January first bill, they will see the credit.
And Levy, do you have any, any other questions?
Yes, they're going to see the credit on the January first bill. Okay.
It's, it's, it's half and half. So you have, it's a four hundred, you have two and two. So, you know, it's two quarter bills, actual bills. So they're going to get the benefit of seeing the actual bill on the third quarter and the fourth quarter. So yes, they will see the benefit.
Practically the last two quarter.
Yes.
Other twenty-six.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councillors, we, on the motion, we need to, I think we need to add effective for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, I believe, right?
I'll make that as part of the motion.
Yeah, just to make sure.
Clarity, sure. And I'd like to make one more comment. This is a very brief comment. I just wanted to give credit to the Disabled American Veterans, did Local DAV Chapter Two for their work on this. I know this was spearheaded by one of their members, Phil Collins, but I know that it was on behalf of the entire membership that moved this forward. And so I want to thank the, the DAV for bringing it to our attention. And while we're at it right now, I wish all the DAV members and all our veterans a Happy Veterans Day. And this is a fantastic vote to have this evening, the meeting before Veterans Day. So this is a great time for this vote. So thank you.
Let's celebrate. Any other questions? Right, I just want to make sure, like, we don't, if we don't need a public hearing on this. I mean, anybody, I believe that the Chief Assessor have checked with the city attorney? Have you, have you checked with the city attorney about the public hearing?
Yes, so this is a local option, and no public hearing needs to be, you know, addressed. We can adopt this tonight, and it will take effect January one.
All right, no problem. Any other questions, Councillors? I hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Councillor Reyes?
Yes.
Councillor Marmo?
Yes.
Councillor Del Rosario is noted as absent. Councillor Luzon?
Yes.
Councillor LaPlante?
Yes.
Councillor Levy?
Yes.
Councillor Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Councillor President Rodriguez?
About on the affirmative, motion carries. So Councillors, before we continue, I just want to recognize the presence
Thank you, thank you, Councillors.
I just want to recognize the presence of Councillor-elect Franklin Miguel Francisco. He's here with us, and he is right behind it, right behind us, taking some notes and following the agenda. Just to be able, feel a little comfortable with, with that, since he going to be joining us. He's expected to join us on the next meeting, which is on, on the second meeting of November. So Franklin Miguel Francisco, congratulations on your victory on District A. I just also want to recognize the presence, she just left. Before I actually mention that, Jessica Ramirez, a school committee elect, Jessica Ramirez. She was just here with us. She just left the building. So congratulations to all that, everybody that participated in the last elections, and have that experience, and the winners, congratulations again. Thank you. All right, we are going back to the Budget and Finance Committee. There is anybody from the Budget and Finance Committee that is here that need to be need to be taken out of that. Why are we going top of the agenda with the public hearings? Oh, no, hold on a second. We have one more. Yeah. That's from the, the ordinance. Yes, we have a few items. Councillor Plant, the Chair of the Budget and Finance, the ordinance committee. So three ninety-six. Twenty-five, Councillor Plant.
So this is an IM three ninety-six twenty-five. It's the Auto Recycle Group LLC seeking a petition for a drunk, I'm sorry, drunk dealer permit. JDC twenty-five zero one for forty-eight fifty Medford Street. So one of the things, that's, I believe it's a committee report. This is a committee report. That's the motion.
So the motion is to accept, accept the, accept the committee report? Yes, on the committee report? Can I have a motion? Motion is to accept the committee report. Can I have a second?
Discussion.
Properly second, discussion, Councillor Plant.
The reason why this was sent up as a committee report and not a favorable recommendation is because we needed to receive written documentation from ISD and the Fire Department regarding their review of, of the conditions at the location. I believe we have received something from ISD.
We do have this.
Here we go. We might actually have it, so let's take a look. I think we got ISD, right? So Councillors, we do have, we, we do have, in our packets, we do have the ISD portion as an email from Philip Stevenson to, to the clerk, dated September seventeenth. And now we have this document from the Police Department, I'm sorry, Fire Department. Anyway, it's a committee report. I make that as the motion, and I can read this while we take a vote on that.
So we have both reports?
To October twenty-one, from Phil Stevenson. And then, there's no date on this, but this is from Nelson Rosa, Fire Prevention Department.
Councillors, any questions? So just to make sure that we are talking about, we know what we're talking about. This is the metal place that is close to the Rotary. The one that we have the issue with the fire, it was close to Exeter. They're very close by, but they are a little separated. So this is the one that we're dealing with, is the one at the Rotary. There, I believe they, they are. There's anybody from the, from the business? Yes, can you come over? This license, yes.
Council President?
Councillor Luzon?
Can we read the letter for the record? The letter that we have in front of us.
The one with the fire?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Get Madam Clerk, please.
This was to the ordinance committee from the city of Lawrence. It's from Nelson Rosa. He's the Fire Prevention Inspector for Lawrence Fire Department. He writes, "I am writing in response to your request for a written report confirming the fire safety status of Auto Recyclers Group located at forty-eight dash fifty Medford Street, as discussed during the ordinance committee meeting held on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. On September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Lawrence Fire Department Fire Prevention Division conducted a fire code compliance inspection alongside the Building Department Inspector, Phil Stevenson. The inspection identified the following fire code violations of the Mass Comprehensive Fire Safety Code and the municipal Lawrence Municipal Code. Violations identified: inadequate clearance around electrical panels, overdue annual inspection of portable fire extinguishers, overdue annual inspection and certification of fire alarm system. The business was notified of these deficiencies and directed to take immediate corrective action. A follow-up inspection conducted on October fourteenth confirms that all violations had been resolved. Corrective actions taken. A minimum thirty-six inch clearance was established and is now maintained in front of all electrical panels. The annual inspection and tag of the fire extinguishers were completed." The annual inspection and tag of the fire extinguishers were completed, the fire alarm system inspected and certified by a licensed contractor. As of October twenty one twenty five, October twenty one twenty twenty five. The facility has demonstrated full compliance with all applicable fire safety regulations. Based on the results of our inspection and the corrective measures taken, the Lawrence Fire Department has determined that the location is safe to operate.
Yeah, based on the firefighter department, we're good to go.
Well, there's a second letter from um Inspection Services.
It's a second letter from Inspection Services, so let's also read this for the record.
On October twenty first, we received a memo from. Inspection Services that reads on the morning of September sixteenth twenty twenty five, the Fire Department. Fire Prevention Division engaged the Inspection Services Department to conduct a joint code compliance review. During the inspection, several serious violations of the State Fire Code, Building Code and Local Ordinances were identified. Based on these findings, the businesses was ordered to bring into full compliance. The initial violations included improper outdoor storage and inadequate distance from property lines and structures. Deficiencies in fire life safety systems, including maintenance of doors and opening protectives. And blocked egress routes, improper storage and failure to remove waste materials. Failure to obtain the required periodic certificate of inspection. Since that time, the company has made substantial progress toward compliance, a reinspection was conducted on October fourteenth by both the Fire Department. Fire Prevention Division and Inspection Services. At that time, all violations have since been addressed in a timely and effective manner. Corrective action taken by the company include removal, reorganization and proper storage of scrap and pallet materials. Clearing and maintaining all egress pathways, ensuring proper maintenance of doors, opening and protective features. Applied for stockpile permits. Housekeeping and site storage management, compliance identification procedure and waste oil handling. Applied for the one ones, one hundred and ten point zero periodic periodic. Certification of inspection, as of today, October twenty first twenty twenty five, the. Facility has demonstrated good faith efforts in compliance with local, state and federal regulations. The business has been given the go ahead to continue with normal operations. The case highlights the importance of coordinated oversight and swift corrective measures. To safeguard both public safety and the business continuity in the City of Lawrence. Sincerely, Philip D Stevenson, Health, Safety and Equipment Official.
Councillors, any questions?
Council President.
Councillor Vice President Infante.
Thank you through Council President, I just want to say first, thank you to Auto Recycles Group. For keeping you aware since the last meeting that we had, um and I also want to say. I don't want to hear in the future that you guys are behind again, cuz that was an issue. Please keep up moving forward, I appreciate the honesty and during the initial meeting that we had and. Oh, that's the other company, I am so sorry. I am so disregard everything I just said, thank you.
They have been twice with us, are they, are they uh?
Yeah, sometimes it's hard to keep up with everything.
Well, I have I have a I have a question, so me personally, I represent the district. The three D uh where the location uh where the the joint yard is located. And um this has this has been a battle uh when it comes to. Keeping up with different things and the 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 fact of the matter is that these licenses are for three years. So we don't see uh this license again for the next three years. I have voted on this for three times already in my my life on this in the council. And now I'm not ready to vote in favor of it until you do one more thing, because since I pass by every day. I know uh what potentially can go wrong. So and I hope that uh the council follow um my advice when it comes to this specific issue. Then I'm surprised that either the firefighter or the inspection or services didn't look at it. So you're fencing. It's a matter of time that you have an accident with a potential injury. On that, since you have concrete blocks that are falling apart, that are not quite uh. Put together, but eventually, they were probably eight years ago, they they were put together, right, but I mean that is that isn't work.
Point of prominence, okay, I I believe you're exhibiting a uh an opinion, you may just, I wanna hear what your opinion is, but I think you should give the the gab to the vice chair. Uh.
Council President, you may proceed.
So now that I don't have the gab, I have the more I have more lead. So now I have a question, not an opinion, I have an opinion before, but now I have a question. When? Are we gonna fix the fence?
I are we talking about the concrete blocks?
Yes.
So we have had an issue with that, but the city actually came back, uh came by a few months ago. And wrote us up or you know asked us to comply and fix that, and we have done that, I don't know if you've been by lately, but it's. Perfectly ninety degree angle, it was all redone, I think you'll find that it's in pretty good condition now.
Well. It's 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 a difficult difficult thing to tell you now. That um that I don't see it that way, I passed by not that long ago. And uh even one of the blocks were on the sidewalk. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I well, I do, I do, are you talking right on the corner of of um the street of?
Alright.
The car dealership is right in the corner there?
Yep, on Medford Street.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, we've rebuilt that whole corner and to straighten it up, and I think it looks it's in pretty good shape, but.
Yeah, I I don't believe it is, to be honest with you. And uh and to be honest with you, I think that that should be fixed, because it's a it's a matter of time. Due to the fact that um there is uh so much. The ground is so wet around there, the material that you guys work on. Uh and the fact that you guys water frequently, when you guys do your operation. That uh complicate things a little bit, and those those uh blocks. Uh over time, they have they have fall off. And they also have, they're not aligned, and they you guys probably. Fix it up a little bit, but not to the standard that. If we just let it be. It's gonna be fine in three years. I believe that I at least I gonna I I I gonna vote on the affirmative once I see. Evidence that that's one hundred percent checked and 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 have a company uh that actually. Come and fix those blocks, not just having that uh the machine and fix it up a little bit. Uh I mean, it it to be honest with you, I'm I'm protecting you guys. Because it's about it's a matter of time that somebody uh walking by. One of those blocks fall off and then injure that person. Um and and it's a safety situation, I have seen it, uh I have reported. And and uh and I'm glad that you you guys fix it a little bit, but today I'm not quite ready to vote. On this license, uh a three years license until we see evidence that that's fixed.
I am seeing some confusion in your face. And I'm I'm going to suggest. I'm gonna hold off my suggestion, I'm gonna hear from the other councillors, councillor Luzon, you have a question, are are you also councillor president?
For now, yeah.
Councillor Luzon.
Thank you, uh. I, we have letters in front of us from the two different departments. And what we have in front of us is that the company is in compliance. I I do understand the concern of the uh president um. The council president, but we also have in front of us a respond. From the two departments, and if they fail to notice. Uh what the council president noticed, we cannot blame this company. I think it's a suggestion, it's a great suggestion, I say according to the uh council president.
I believe.
It's a safety issue, I don't know, I haven't been around your business, I'm not aware of. Any of that. But if. The council president stated here is have it 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 it's there, is that should be. Uh on inspection inspection, on the inspe- inspection department. So if they fail to name it. We cannot blame the company, cuz according to what we have in front of us, they are in compliance. I don't see anything, if any of the councillors see something in the letter, we're just checking here. And I don't see any mention of the concern. A valid concern that the council president had, but what we have in front of us is two letters stating. That they are in compliance and they kind of follow what we requested from them, thank you.
You answer the plans, look like you had a question.
More of a comment, keep in mind, this is a committee report, this is not on a final approval, so. Once we have this committee report done, then there'll be a motion at some point. I'm probably gonna make the motion to adopt or approve this and hopefully get seconded, then we could have this discussion. Whether or not we should amend it or vote against it or whatever, but this is a committee report at this point.
Okay, does anyone have on the committee report? Councillor Marmal?
I feel that it was essential to back the city council president in this situation because. I am the current councillor that represents this district. And I must concur with the concerns and the challenges that the city council president mentioned. Um oftentimes, um as a body, we are approving these permits, not realizing. That they're for three years or five years, and within that time period, um there are certain um issues that we may want to address. But we no longer have the opportunity to do so, um being that I only have less than two years serving um this district. Um again, I must say that I agree with our our city council president in terms of. The structure and how the visibility of some of these businesses um seems to. Seeps to take a part in the devaluation of our community. Um despite the fact that I am seeing uh letters from the Police Department and uh giving clearance. Um I must say that I think it's time that we. Start taking responsibility to hold businesses accountable, um because it's not only what's. Working in the inside of your organizations and making sure that you guys are passing inspection. Uh but also the outside of your property, cuz oftentimes I'm noticing that there is a lot of business owners who. Um which I appreciate wanting to conduct business here in the City of Lawrence, but don't reside in Lawrence. And they go home, but you know, w- we're here, the residents that live here and are seeing the day to day, the 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 trash. The fences that are nearly falling apart. That hurts the pride of our community, um and I have often heard uh complaints. Um in this sector, so again, I must say that I I concur. Um and I think it's time that we start taking responsibility to hold businesses accountable.
Thank you, madam, madam clerk, we're gonna we're gonna take the role, we're gonna do the roll call for the to accept the committee report.
The councillor made a motion and I didn't catch you second.
Just I just made a committee report.
More than, who, can we have a second? Councillor Luzon seconded. And now can we do the the roll call?
Um councillor.
Can I make a comment?
Discussion, councillor Luzon.
Yeah, it could, uh and I'm. We are blaming a and I know this is a committee report, it is clear. But if we have any concern, we should send something to the department that just sent us a letter. Uh stating that oh uh this company is in compliance, uh I don't know if I'm making myself clear. So we should say send something to Inspeccional and to well to the inspection, cuz it looks like. The concern is related to the Inspection Department. Cuz we're not, we are not here to, uh we're not inspectors. So if they send something stating that this business is in in compliance. Uh we should sense it send the concern that council president has. I I understand what you're saying, council president, but we also have something from two departments. Stating that they are in compliance, so they are not failing, it's the two departments. That are, well, I don't know about the Lawrence Fire Department, it's Inspection Services that is giving a wrong information. That is what I wanna make clear.
Thank you, councillor Luzon, councillor Marmal.
Okay, so I have a que- I have a valid question, actually. Despite despite that um businesses that come before us, seeking to have renewals of permits or licenses. So despite that they are in compliance, um as as a body, are we obligated to renew those licenses? Just because everything passes, or do we as a body could choose that this business for. Whatever reason, if valid, we don't have to renew?
Councillor President.
Uh through you, um Vice President Infante. Uh we, the council have the authority to uh give those license to John dealers. The the John dealer license, only the council can do this. Uh because it's a special license or it's a it's a type three. Uh dealership license, which is only the council. So we do have the prerogative to accept the uh and also give this license only. So nobody else can do in the City of Lawrence and within the city, only the council. So for that specific business, so it's only one of the few business that we have the authority to provide the license.
Is this does this pertain to the actual committee report? So that we can move forward, get in motion on 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 the floor and actually continue. To speak about about the permit issuing this permit specifically? Are there any?
I was just gonna comment on the on the on the on the councillor from District D's comments, but if you wanna move on the committee report, you.
I do.
I'm I don't have a problem with that.
Madam, madam clerk, can we call the roll?
This is to accept the committee report, councillor Levy?
Yes.
Councillor Laplante?
Yes.
Councillor Luzon?
Yes.
Councillor Del Rosario is noted as absent, councillor Marmal?
Yes.
Councillor Reyes?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante? Oh, I apologize, Council President Rodriguez? Council Vice President?
Yes.
Motion carries, okay, now can I have a motion pertaining?
Make a motion that we adopt a a grant a license to the company.
Motion has been made by councillor Laplante, there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councillor Reyes, discussion, council president.
Now, this is to discuss the approval of the license. Like I said, uh previously, I uh until I see. Some type of repairs on the fence, not only on the blocks, the concrete blocks, but on that uh. The fence that you guys have, let's put it, let's put it clear, is it a. Metal roof. Standing up with concrete blocks holding it. Am I correct?
Um there are some concrete blocks, there's wooden, excuse me, wooden poles that they are, it you know, nailed to.
And then and there there that are metal, metal roof.
Metal sheets, yeah.
Yeah. Full of graffitis.
Full of graffiti?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we're actually, if you go by, if you've been by, we have painted part of it, we've started. Painting everything just black to get rid of the graffiti.
I understand.
We have not finished.
So eh and according to the regulations, you're not supposed to go up. Taller than your fence.
Uh that's actually, we have a a high high pile storage license for twenty five foot piles.
And then your fence should be twenty five, twenty five foot.
Oh, I didn't know that, that's not what I.
That's according to the state law, not according to what I said. But I just said, at the end of the day, what it will like, even though that part which you go higher on the pile that you have. And so far so won, um I know that you guys get into compliance once you guys come over to the city council. Um and I see it because I live by, I live very close by, so I see it every day. Uh it's not just you, it's the other companies as well. But but I what I have seen it and and I have I have seen the lack of effort. From your company is on the fencing portion of it, is 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 a is a metal sheets. Holding it up, a lot of concrete block on the upside. And it's not quite, it's not quite to the, it's not even quite to the standard. I don't know how content inspection services didn't mention it. It's, it's, it's something that should be fixed. You guys should be proud about fixing it. That's basically the, the, what I wanted to get. It's like, yes. The answer that I would like to hear from you is like, yes, we will take care of it. That's the answer that I would like to see, to hear. Why? Because it's a business that come in front of us every three years, and for the last nine years, I haven't say no. I asked you for a bunch of paperwork before, and when it comes, the first time that you guys came around. We worked that out. And now, I'm, and six years ago, I didn't see, we didn't question it that much. We just approved it. This time around, we, we didn't question the other locations much. But two, three days later, we have an incident that, you know, bring up a lot of other issue. And even though we, we have that experience with the other company, we're not holding you accountable to that, to those issues. But what I want to see for, for sure is to the, your interest of fixing up that fence, painting it, feel proud about it. Potentially changing it from metal sheets to something that is more appropriate to that business. I have seen those businesses on Chelsea. And they are not quite like we have in Lawrence. And even down the street, that, that other business, that John Yard down the street, they have chandelier fence all around. And, but you guys do not. And I was just waiting for an opportunity to bring it up to the council. But instead, what I did is like, wait for you guys to come down, so we can work this out. And we can work, we can, you guys can, can fix that up on time and be able to give you a license for the next three years. Again, this is not a one-year's license. This is not a temporary thing. It's, it's a three-years type of deal. And, and trust me, we, a lot of that, a lot of that trucks passing by are related to Market Basket. Are related to you guys, all the business around. And, and, and we have seen, you know, how other businesses operate around. But it is, it is, it is concerning that this issue has been for so long. And we haven't see you guys fixing it up and feel proud about that. Yes, we fixed it. We're working for the city. Unless the city pass by and bring you up. It's like, like I said, it was, even on the sidewalk, technically, that's a sidewalk that is in front of your business. And, and there was a concrete block from your fence, blocking the sidewalk for such a long time. I don't know if you guys removed it lately, since you guys were, were up. But it is, it is like, I wanna see you, I wanna see you guys be more proactive instead of reactive, and not waiting for somebody to come over. Or waiting for somebody to take pictures, or the councilor to pass by and say, this is horrible. And then, and then fix it. It's like, it's not, it's not a good thing. So are you willing to fix it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So with that said, I will make a motion to table and wait for, for those reports, wait for those pictures, where you can fix the fence.
There's a.
Council President? Council Vice President?
To what standard? I mean, I'm not, I don't, are you saying to refence the whole line?
You should, though, to be honest with you, one hundred percent. You've been, you've been having that fence for over nine years. And that's a lot of money, but you make a lot of money, trust me. That's how, that's how you do business. That's the cost of doing business. As a matter of fact, to be honest with you, what about if somebody get killed? What's gonna happen?
I don't, I don't understand the correlation.
You wanna see the picture?
Killed by the metal fence. I don't.
You wanna see the pictures of the block falling apart?
Okay, so this is what I'm going to suggest.
So I'll make a motion to table.
Counsel President, Counsel Vice President?
No, you should recognize it, because it's a motion, it's an order.
The motion, the motion is in order, but before I recognize it, I'm going to say, I think it's appropriate for you to connect with the business owner, council president, go to this.
They, they, once I make a motion to table, yes, I will, I'll pass by. I'm not an expert on fencing, but I mean, they should know.
Right. But it, it would be more, it's, it is, it's, it would, it would make more sense for you after this is tabled, if it's passed, for you to go to the business, walk with them, explain exactly what, you're explaining it now, but sometimes having that visual representation helps. Walk them through right there in person of what you want to see, or looking, or looking to, to have them work on. I think that, that might be more practical. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at faces, confused faces. I don't, I don't think people are processing this. Take the time to go have a conversation in person at their facility and walk them through what, what you are, what you're explaining now. So there is a motion to tables. There a second?
I'm trying to talk before the motion to table. Counsel, Vice President?
Counsel Levy?
Okay, so I think that's saying, I believe that we should ask also to the inspectional service department. If the president is gonna go over there to go with him, just to put in writing everything that he been seeing in the way that it should be done. And to send the information to inspectional servant to go in there and and make sure that's everything that they, see they prepare, everything is in compliance before when they say that everything has been done. So that's my advice regarding this. And because that way, it's in writing, it's through the city. It's like inspectional service who should be responsible for getting the citation or getting whatever that's in the repair.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
All right, so there's a motion.
I'll get in touch with the inspectional services. I'm not going to the business to direct the business, or so how to do business. Not doing that.
There's a motion to tables. There a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Marmo. Madam clerk, can you please call the roll?
Um, this is on a motion to table. Counselor Reyes? Counselor Marmo?
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario is noted as absent. Counselor Lozon?
No.
Counselor LaPlante?
No.
Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counsel, President Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President?
Yes. So this, can we make sure that we, that, I'm sorry, that count as five to, to motion carries? Make sure that Inspection Services Director receives a communication from the city council office about this. And if, if they need to connect the council president on further discussion, so please contact him directly.
Thank you.
All right, the next item that we have is okay, we're going back to the top of the agenda. In the next public hearing, we're gonna read is three eighty twenty-five, there is no objection to take it as out of order. Madam Clerk, please read the notice for three eighty twenty-five.
Sorry, we pulled it out. Right, do you have it? I showed you a minute ago. I pulled it out to show you, and I.
Just take your time.
Oh, we're just looking at it. Three eighty, just from one. I'm picking out, can't find it. No, this isn't it. This is three ninety-six.
We're on top of the agenda with the other item then.
Thank you for your patience. Notice is hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November sixth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M. In the South Lawrence East Education Complex, one sixty-five Crawford Street, Lawrence, Mass. Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, in accordance with the recently revised City Council Rule Two, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person and remotely to accommodate participants with health considerations that prevent them from participating in person. Access codes for remote participation are available from the city clerk, eileen.branal@cityoflawrence.com, or nine seven eight six two zero thirty-two thirty. Meeting is also available on Facebook and YouTube. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendments to the revised ordinances of the city of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following sub-paragraph in the proper alphabetical order to section ten point thirty-six point zero one zero of the municipal code, parking prohibited on certain streets. Irving Avenue, both sides between Hampshire Street and Bennington Street, between six P M and seven A M. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Our public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Rocky Morrison, Clean River Project. Was that, was that for both sides of Irving Street, or just one side?
That's what, that is, that's what was published, both sides.
Both sides. It's supposed to be one side along the greenway, along the Spigot River. It's not supposed, supposed to be both sides.
We can, we can make that on the motion to actually the.
That's what we're looking for. Looking for just along the Spigot River.
The, the fact that it's less, less restricted, we can actually adapt it in the motion. If it is more restricted, then we're gonna have to publish it.
Yeah, we're trying to protect the Spigot River where they're parking and drinking and throwing their stuff over the guardrail and so forth, so.
So, so public hearing? So you wanna speak on the public hearing, or you wanna speak on the item? All right, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's the motion?
Motion to approve?
There's a motion to approve properly second. Uh, this is only for the, for one side of the, of the.
From this, yeah, from the side of the river.
Side of the river. Discussion. Counselor Lozon?
Um, I, I do understand your concern, and I but I wanna know if residents were informed, we have an issue with parking on District B, in District B. There's no, they don't find parking, especially for the people that work. And they come back at night, it's, it's a nightmare. There's nowhere to park. And we don't have a public parking in the area, so.
So this is permanent? Or this is for the, during the project?
This is for the, this is for the neighborhood watch. Mr. Lopez is part of that neighborhood watch. All the, all the houses, the three families on that street are, are part of a neighborhood watch. And Mr. Lopez could speak for that.
So the, the question is, this is while the project is going, what's going, is going on, the Clean River Project, or this is permanent, the prohibition?
This is permanent. It's a permanent one. And Lopez is part of the, the neighborhood watch with the neighbors.
Neighborhood watch. It's, it's, it, may I finish, Counsel President?
Counsel Lozon?
Do you live in the area? Do you live in the area, sir?
Good evening, yes. I live on Alma Street, right on Irving.
Are, are you concerned about the drinking or about protecting the river? Because it, it looks like it's two different things. If it's a safety issue, we should get the police involved. Because you know that there's an issue with parking in that area. Especially now with the new schools that is not far, far away from there. People are parking in other streets because they cannot find parking.
Yeah, pretty much, we wanna protect the river. It, it looks good right now. And we have like already two meetings, an Irving now with our neighbors. And we understand we need those spots to park in at nighttime. But the problem is, right from, I don't know if you're the area, from Middle Court to Hampshire Street. We don't have neighbors there. Pretty much is my business and a house in Walden Street, I think they parked the car in that street. But pretty much at nighttime, everybody go there and eat and drink and do things that's not supposed to do. And then we end up with the trash.
Ah, okay, so it's two.
Can I, can I get your name again?
My name is Uriel Lopez. I own a business.
You, you own your Lopez?
Uriel, that's Uriel. You are, yeah, Uriel.
Uriel.
Uriel, yes.
Lopez, Uriel Lopez.
Counsel President?
I haven't finished it. And so you own a business in that area?
I own a business and I own a house.
You own a house, so.
Yeah.
Because I'm very familiar with your area. I'm also very familiar with the baseball field. And I know that people have concern. I, I, I understand your concern, but I'm also, as the counselor of the district, I know that we get so many complaints about parking. That I, I, to be honest, if we keep eliminating parking, this is gonna become a, a nightmare. Especially for the working families. They go to work, and when they come back, there's nowhere to park. And I do understand the concern, the concern that you have. I, I do understand that. But it looks like it's a safety concern that, that the police department should be dealing with that. Instead of blocking so many parking spaces for the residents in need. And what we are seeing now is people run other streets, parking far away from their houses, because they don't find parking. We have houses with five to four cars because of the financial situation that we're living. People are renting rooms. And, and it, that, it, renting rooms is equal to more cars in the streets. I, we'd love to vote in favor of this, but if you, if we can find a solution, but we don't have a solution to bring more parking, especially to that area, Council President. So blocking this amount of parking is gonna be a nightmare for other residents. This is permanent. And you walk that area, Council President. You are very familiar with that area. There's no parking in District B, especially in the area that you live, sir.
So, uh, quick question on that, on that, on the blocks. How many parking you, you guys expect to be blocked, to be prohibited? How many parking spaces?
I was talking to Mr. Rocky, because he's in charge of cleaning the river. Least half of Irving now, maybe we can get from Hampshire to Alma Street or Middle Court. Because those are the empty spots with no neighbors on front of that and the side of the, my businesses, which is only the river and there's like the Lhasa House there. And the people, they just go there and do things don't supposed to do. And we end up with a lot of trash. Like right now, if you, police go by, I'm pretty sure it's people drinking and smoking and that, especially in that spot. I understand from Alma to Bennington or Saratoga Street, the neighbors, they park there and they use the parking lot. And I understand, Lawrence, we have a lot of cars and we need more parkings. But this is something, I don't know, we can do, if you guys.
It's like an enforcement issue.
Counsel President?
Counsel Vice President Infante?
Thank you. I was going to say that. This sounds, I'm, I'm having difficulties connecting with the issue that you're experiencing as a business owner, as a homeowner in connection to the Clean River Project. I'm sure that most of that trash is on property, perhaps on your property, on your business, and not most on the river, if it's on the opposite side. I, I'm just having, I'm having, mentally, I'm, I'm, I'm having issues connecting the two. I don't, I don't agree with this as of now. I'm, I'm seeing. I'm seeing Rocky may have further explanation, so, but this is where I'm standing as of now, and so I hear everything. And I agree with the Council President. This sounds more like we're having issues with inspectional services and Lawrence Police Department actually doing the job and ensuring that they're ticketing or issuing consequences to individuals who are violating our local laws. But I'm going to, I'm going to finish there. I'm going to listen to the rest of the discussion, and then hopefully we'll see what happens.
Any other councillors? Councillor La Plan?
So I just want to make one real quick comment. A colleague to my right made a comment that people are renting rooms in various parts of the city. We need to get ISD on that, because I'm not sure that's lawful, and that's adding to some of the issues that we're facing. Just as quick as that. But the other point, to this point, which is Irving have both sides. I think one of the folks here said, just looking for one side of the street.
The motion was to one side only.
The motion was for one side? It was different than with the public hearing?
Yep, because the fact that they are less restricting what we publish, we're good to go on that. If it is more restricted, then then we need to publish it again.
Okay, so, appreciate that. Second thing, I just, whose district are we, is this?
The...
That's definitely yours. Okay. And just so I'm clear, I've always kind of leaned toward the district councillors on things like this. Listen, this parking issue, as my colleague and good friend has said, it's a real issue throughout the city. And we have brought, let's be honest, a lot of this we've brought upon ourselves with the relaxed zoning, with the inability to do inspections and ISD getting involved. We have brought this problem on ourselves, and at some point, this is what's happening. It's come to roost. Forget the rest of the expression, but chickens have come to roost, I think is the expression, and that's happening, and it will continue to happen. I'm not the smartest guy in the world or around this dais, but even I saw this several years ago when we saw this happening, and this is, this is a reality that we're dealing with now. There's not going to be any more parking, but we're going to be building plenty more units. So, and we're having lawful units. So, I'm going to follow the lead of my colleague who represents this area. She knows better than I what the needs are for this area. And so if we need to not go forward on this, I will vote against it. If we're looking for something that's more modified, maybe this, maybe only for parts of the year. Maybe they, maybe the cleanup only happens at parts of the year. And maybe that's the time if they need access to that section, maybe that's what we do. Maybe do things that are temporary rather than permanent. Maybe there's ways that we can do it so that both ends are met. And I see that Mr. Morrison's shaking his head. He might even have an option that might be palatable to all of us, so. Thank you, Council President.
No problem. Just some fact that I want to bring up when it comes to the number of the parking that we might prohibit today. That's over forty parking spaces between Hampshire and Bennington that are, if you look at the image on the website, there's over twenty parking right now, not right now, on that image that were parked. And there's a lot of empty spots that were not taken on the image. So it's a good guess to be potentially over forty parking due to the fact that people are nasty.
Do you, Mr. President?
Yes.
Excuse me. The mayor came and the chief of police came to our neighborhood watch, and he had a recommendation, maybe have, was it permit parking for the residents? So they had their own parking space. That was an idea he had. We did talk about this. This has been, this has been going around for a while, this motion about 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. This has been on the table for a while now, a couple of months. But the mayor did come to the neighborhood watch, and he recommended maybe this is the way you go and buy it. And you know, permit parking for residents, so you don't lose the parking, but yet they get their parking spot. It's another idea that you guys can take up.
Oh, definitely, we can, they can send those suggestions over. In the meantime, what we're entertaining is the prohibition of those parking. So, but that doesn't mean that all their options cannot be, cannot be, cannot be bring up to the council again and another, with another solution if this one fails. So the council is open to anything. The problem is that once we prohibit it, it's not the mayor that is prohibiting it, it's the council. And then right away, people are going to say, the council did it. And yes, we are doing it.
Council President.
Councilor Vasquez, President Infante.
I would, I see that, I do see that there was a councillor involved in here, and I know that Council Reyes is very familiar as a, for years as an at-large councillor. But I do want to ask, why was not, why wasn't the district councillor invited to this meeting to see what you guys presented to the mayor, knowing that this would be in front of the council?
Can I answer to that?
Let's allow the councillor that was part of the meeting to respond.
No.
Council Reyes, Council Reyes, were you present at least? Or what was the situation there?
So we received the request, and also we sent the item to the police department. The police department sent back to us a memo to give you a favorable recommendation. We can send the item back to the police department and asking, because they're not adding how many parking is affecting in this kind of decision. So I think we passing by, when they presenting the issue, it's very important to us to maintain our river clean around. But when we talking about, we go to eliminate a forty spot to our resident, we need to take that in consideration.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilor Vice President Infante.
I would like, I mean, I would like to see, we have the councillor at large who's a sponsor of this. I, and I'm sorry, I'm seeing Council Levy as well as a co-sponsor. I think Council Reyes' suggestion is good. I think the two councillors at largest, at largest with the district councillors should go back with the police department, and really the three of them, look at that with Rocky and the resident. And that gives you guys also the opportunity to have a more in-depth conversation with the councillors who will be taking a vote on this in the future, if that sounds reasonable to everyone.
Yeah, we're trying to stop the illegal dumping from those people.
I mean, I think that the councillor for the district should get involved for sure.
I...
Council Luzon.
Just for the record, I was not invited to this meeting. I knew it was happening. And just to answer Rocky, and I know he has good intention. He cares about his project. We love the project that he's leading. But the mayor's not an expert. He doesn't live around that area, and it was not up to him to make that promise. It was up to this council, and all the neighbors should be informed. And I know that Council Reyes was not present at the meeting, and Council Levy was not present at that meeting. They had a meeting, and I was informed, not invited. I was informed like five or 10 minutes before the meeting started. So my present there was not requested.
Council President, by me.
Council Vice President Infante.
So what I, so what I would, as the vice president of the council, I'm inviting my colleagues. Council Levy, I'm pointing at you as well from above. But please get together, see what's going on. Invite the Lawrence Police Department to reevaluate through the ordinance committee, however it is that you guys think is best. Let me finish before you give me the thing.
That way you get the message.
Yeah, yeah, let me finish. And get to, and if we come back to the drawing table, there's still questions, there's still... I'm not going to say it's going to be approved by doing that. I'm not going to say it's going to be denied either. But I do think it is important for the councillors to see. Council Reyes said police department didn't, perhaps didn't include the parking spaces within their analysis. And that's something that should be shown to the police department, the councillors. So I just hope you guys take my suggestion, and we'll see where it goes from here. Okay, now.
Yeah, passing over the cable. So I can have a few questions. So this is, this is what I see here. I walked that area a couple of times in the last few weeks. And the problem here is that we have a certain issue when it comes to resident parking, when it comes to people saying that we clean up the street, they, we don't want it to get dirty. I got it. But also, when it comes to, you know, dirtiness. People, they do, a lot of people, you know, they do it all the time. They go to fast food restaurants and drop off the bag. They open the door and do it. We seen it all the time. But what we're doing here is like, there is people that don't do that. And there is over forty parking spaces that are going to be now blocked. And that doesn't mean that people are going to stop doing that because it's a behavior issue, an enforcement issue on our side. How are we going to enforce somebody for not dropping trash on the street? That's going to be a little bit of a challenge. But I'm not in favor of prohibiting parking because of a behavior issue that we have around. And we understand that we want to protect the river. But I mean, that doesn't mean that people are not going to just do illegal dumping, just do all the, all the things. I have, me personally, I have give back those fast food restaurant bags full of trash. Give it back to the people that turn on the street. I have done that. Because, but that's, that's something that is, they behave that way. So it's a behavior change that we need to work on that's going to take years for the city to accomplish some type of result. But prohibiting over forty parking spaces on that area is like crazy. The idea that, the fact that we actually talking about that. I mean, it's like, we have potentially other issues, but I mean, the main issue on that area is parking. And that, that place dead, down there, that is recreational place dead there that actually saves us a lot of money, believe it or not. How? How that saves us a lot of money? When people go over there and release a stress, play softball, and park there, that, those are hours that potentially people are, might take to do on them. And I know that on the backside of that place dead, it's a lot, it's a lot going on that is not related to the place dead. And I get, and I get you. I think that we should develop a plan that will work with the enforcement agencies that we have in the City of Lawrence. We work with different programs that actually make peoples aware of the importance of maintaining the river, the river clean. And we work with the people that are actually have bad behaviors when it comes to parking one spot and then dropping off everything that they have on the car. But prohibiting parking, I don't think is the solution, unfortunately, especially in that area.
Yeah, I understand from, let's say, Middle Court to Saratoga Street, the neighbors there, their house right in front of the river. I understand they need it, and if it's okay, I don't know how it works, but they can stay with the parkings. But from Middle Court to Hampshire, there's no houses in the front and no houses in the river, it's not, you know. So they use that spot to do things they're not supposed to do. And then at the end, we end up with a lot of trash. I understand the neighbors all the way up, yes. But on this side, it's kind of dark. We have a lot of trees from the Lhasa House there, and we have no neighbors, no... So the people, they come there, they spend three hours. I was talking to, when we did a meeting over there with the chief of police, and I told them, we need them to swing by maybe twice a night or something. People drinking there, they using drugs, they fornicating there, they doing a lot of things. And then next day, when you go pick up the trash, because we're doing it right now, you find a lot of stuff on the floor that aren't supposed to be there. I understand, but they don't do that by the houses, by Saratoga Street. Regarding about the baseball fields, you mentioned it. We have two baseball fields there, but we don't have our own parking. What about when people come from out of town to play a game? Where they going to park? They going to use our parkings? No, we need maybe to have only one field and use the other one for parking like other towns they have. I play soccer, I go to different towns, I go to soccer field, and we have twenty parkings to park in there. Nice. So in here, we got two fields, and we have no way to park a car there. So we got to use our parking for our neighbors? That's not fair.
No, the thing is, is that even though we should, I mean, I guess that in this conversation, we're going to agree to disagree, due to the fact that everybody that have a car pay for access taxes. That means that they potentially have the right to park on, throughout the neighborhoods. Unless that we develop a program that actually have resident parking. And if we do that, that means that we're going to have to do that for every street. And that means that potentially we have more car than people. I don't know if you know that we have over seventy-four thousand cars in Lawrence. And according to the census, it's about seventy-eight thousand people. So on the school system, we have fourteen students, fourteen thousand students, just on the public schools. Those doesn't drive, potentially, most likely. So it's an issue, but, and we understand. But I think that we should work towards getting the safety issue taken care of first that we have in that area. Because based on your statement, there is a, there's a lot of safety issue that affect the quality of life of you guys living around, and we understand that. But I think that it's more like another issue than just the parking. Because if parking parked properly, if cars parked properly and doesn't do the damage that you just mentioned, it will be okay, I'm assuming. So I think that there is a lot of issues that need to be taken care of, so people can...
Some people, they already grab the spot to come and spend three hours, four hours there, and at the end, they end up throwing trash. It's kind of dangerous work in the area I pointed right now because the people with the gun, or I don't know, people in there, they're smoking, they're drinking, they... They already have that, they already take that spot to do that.
So again, I'm going to actually wrap this up, Council Luzon. I'm going to suggest for you guys to meet again, and I'm going to emphasize getting the councillors involved. Something like enforcement, I can tell you, I'm a district councillor myself. And when I'm hearing issues similar to yours within my district, you can ask some of the lieutenants, you can ask the police chief. I do not stop bothering them until that gets resolved, until they enforce it more. So that's what's important too, when you have these meetings. And it's not just the mayor, at least including a city councillor at large or the district councillor, or both, to help, to help, I guess, improve the situation. And that's all I'm going to say. Are you all set? Council Luzon.
I just have a question, and I know you had a meeting. It was on a Sunday morning, I believe. Yeah, and the chief of police, because you already mentioned, I'm assuming that the mayor made a promise in that meeting. That it happened, I think the meeting happened how many weeks ago? Two, three weeks ago? Three? Did the mayor promise that this will happen? That he made a promise there?
No, no mayor.
The chief of police made a promise there? What was the, what was his feedback?
There was no promises, it was just suggestions. We did tell them that there was moving forward on this meeting here. It's been going on for a couple of months now. But they knew about it, but they just made suggestions.
Okay, so, Council Luzon, I'm going to wrap it up. We know that this meeting happened, we know there were suggestions. Again, follow through, follow up with, with our departments are really critical because they have ten thousand other things going on. And this is where the body of nine of us come in to keep things top, top, and top of mind, so that they don't forget about issues like this. Because when you think about the city overall, trash, hangouts can be, become minute compared to other situations that happen in our city. And these things, and these become less and less of a priority. And again, this is where we step in. So with that... So with that being said, can I have a motion to table item? Three, three eighty dash twenty-five. That's a move. So move, who says the move? Um, Council, uh, motion made by Council Reyes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council, uh, Council President. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
It's on a motion to table, Councilor Reyes? Councilor Marmo?
Yes.
Councilor Del Rosario is noted as absent. Councilor Luzon? Councilor Plant?
Yes.
Councilor Levy?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Council President or Council Vice President?
Yes.
Uh, please, could you let them know that just to call or when they see or are we gonna call them, uh, for the meeting? What is the best way to do it?
I'm going to, if, if I can, Councilor, I'm going to suggest, um, for the co-sponsors of, of this item to take the lead. Just at least the initial conversation, send an email to Mister, um, Rocky, to, to, um, Rocky will, will, will connect with the, with the resident, but the councilor should send an email to LPD. And I would suggest having Inspection Services there, a representative from there, and then you guys connect with Rocky and get that date settled. I think that's the easiest way, unless you guys come up with something else, then, then that's that, but.
And I also, DPW need to be involved because they need to count the parking space.
Oh, DPW, DPW is here too, so, yeah.
I know that's
And, and different departments, the, DPW and the police department, most likely. Uh, because it's an enforcement issue and it's a safety issue. And also potentially solving those issues is, uh, a proposal for prohibiting parking. So we need to know like parking spots that are might be in jeopardy.
Council Levy, I'm seeing Council Reyes nodding her head, so I'm, I'm going to assume she's gonna be the one to send the email. Or you, you happy to, Madam Clerk? Okay, so Madam Clerk is gonna work with Council Reyes to, to get this ball rolling. Councilor Levy?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, yes. We have to send something that's, uh, I forgot to ask all of this. Oh, not that I forgot, but I was waiting in, just to request, okay, so to have a meeting, the day of the meeting and to involve like the police department, like you say, the PDLO and, and, um, inspectional service. And so at the same time, uh, Council Luzon, uh, Council Reyes and myself.
All right, councilors, we have, um, we have a couple of other public hearings that we need to go through. So the first public hearing will be in relationship to item, uh, three sixty-one twenty-three, uh, nineteen twenty-five, three forty-seven twenty-five, three forty-eight twenty-five, three forty-nine twenty-five, three sixty-nine twenty-five, three seventy twenty-five, three seventy-one twenty-five. Madam Clerk, do you mind reading the notice?
I'd like to make a motion that we dispense with reading the preamble.
There's a motion on the table, can I hear a second? Properly second discussion. There is none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
This is to not read the preamble. Um, Councilor Levy?
Yes.
Councilor Plant?
Yes.
Council Luzon? Council Del Rosario is noted as absent.
Yes.
You are present.
Council Reyes?
He's just saying that you are present.
Council Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
About yes. All right, uh, Madam Chair, please proceed.
The purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information and public input concerning the proposed amendments to revise ordinances of the city of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following sub-paragraphs to section ten point thirty-six point three four zero of the municipal code handicap parking in the proper alphabetical order. Document number three sixty-one dash twenty-five, Elizabeth Street, east side from a point twenty feet north of Lowell Street to a point forty feet north of Lowell Street. Document number nineteen dash twenty-five, Linden Street, east side from a point sixty feet southeast of Jasper Street to a point eighty feet southeast of Jasper Street. Document number three forty-seven dash twenty-five, Fairmont Street, west side from a point twenty feet northwest of Auburn Street to a point forty feet northwest of Auburn Street. Document number three forty-eight twenty-five, State Street, east side from a point sixty-two feet south of the end of a street to a point eighty-two feet south of the end of a street. Document number three forty-nine dash twenty-five, Washington Street, west side from a point sixty-four feet south of Lake Street to a point eighty-four feet south of Lake Street. Document number three sixty-nine dash twenty-five, Greenwood Street, southeast side from a point two hundred and thirty feet south of Lowell Street to a point two hundred and fifty feet south of Lowell Street. Document number three seventy dash twenty-five, High Street, southwest side from a point two hundred and sixty-six feet northwest of Grove Street to a point two hundred and eighty-six feet northwest of Grove Street. And document number three seventy-one dash twenty-five, Albion Street, west side from a point one hundred and ninety-eight feet north of Avon Street to a point two hundred and eighteen feet north of Avon Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Uh, anybody from the public that wishes to speak? I see none. Uh, public hearing is now closed. Uh, councilors, take a motion one by one, if possible. Yeah, I had a motion for item.
I'd like to make a motion on three sixty-one twenty-three handicap parking at Elizabeth Street near Lowell Street, that's the motion.
To be honest with you, I was a sponsor for this item. That was two years ago. I don't know if that is, it's not longer needed. So I'll ask for motion to table until I find out. Table, until I find out whether or not that's needed.
You may have made a, I should go back on our, that could have been why that we made a motion to withdraw. So at this point, if I will withdraw that motion in a moment, I'll look that up because I have the listing of all the withdrawals and I'll see if that's on there.
No, it is a public hearing motion. Uh, it's, we, we post a public hearing. So there's, if it is for withdrawal, we have a public hearing in place.
Motion to table.
A motion to table, properly second. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
This is, I'm sorry.
Item three sixty-one.
I have this motion to table. Um, Councilor Reyes? Council Marmo? Council Del Rosario is noted as absent. Council Luzon?
Yes.
Council Plant?
Yes.
Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
Well, yes. I think carries. I had motion, uh, now we're gonna entertain a motion for item nineteen twenty-five.
Make a motion that we approve document, uh, document number nineteen twenty-five handicap parking in One Linden.
There's a motion on the table, properly second, can I hear a second? Properly second discussion. I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Plant?
Yes.
Council Luzon?
Yes.
Council Del Rosario is noted as absent. Council Marmo? Council Reyes? Council Vice President?
Yes.
Council President?
About yes. Motion carries now, item two seventy-three twenty-five, uh, no, sorry. Item two forty-seven twenty-five.
Um, I can make a motion that, um, that we approve document number two forty-seven, three forty-seven twenty-five handicap parking at Two Grandmont Street.
Right, there's a motion on the table, properly second discussion. Can I hear a second before?
Second.
Properly second discussion. All right, there's no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Reyes? Council Marmo? Council Del Rosario is noted as absent. Council Luzon?
Yes.
Council Plant?
Yes.
Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
About yes. Motion carries. Uh, item three forty, three forty-eight twenty-five.
Make a motion to adopt handicap parking in Sixty Street?
A motion to adopt. Can I hear a second? Properly second discussion. I hear none, um, discussion, Councilor, where's, where's Infante? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Plant? Council Luzon? Council Del Rosario is noted as absent. Council Marmo? Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
Put on the fire, Madam, motion carries. And now, item, um, three forty-nine twenty-five, councilors, what's the motion?
If handicap parking in sixty-two Washington Street is sent, uh, that's a, make that in a form of motion to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt, properly second discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Plant?
Yes.
Council Luzon?
Yes.
Council Del Rosario is noted as absent. Council Marmo? Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
Uh, motion carries. Item, um, three sixty-nine twenty-five.
Handicap parking in ninety-three Greenwood, make a motion to adopt.
It's a motion to adopt, properly second discussion. I hear none, um, councilors, what's the motion? I mean, a motion to approve, no discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council Reyes? Council Marmo?
Yes.
Council Del Rosario is noted as absent. Council Luzon? Council Plant?
Yes.
Council Levy?
Yes.
Council Vice President? Council President?
I put on the fire, Madam, even though there is a, a, a anti-handicap parking right next to it. And I know that because they're, they, they live right in front of my house. And I know that because is the person that is having that doesn't want nobody to park in front of him and own his parking spot. And I know that because everyone, everyone on this room know this person and he's very active in politics. And that is not bad, not good.
Sorry, can I reconsider my, my vote?
It's, it's affecting this person. Problem is not this person. Problem is the other person that have that parking spot and nobody, nobody, no, don't want nobody to park on his parking, handicap parking spot. And that's why the neighbor right next to it need to apply to have a, a, a person that really needs it have to apply for another one. Yep, that's how it is. That's how politics work. Alfonso Rodriguez, yes to you. Everybody knows him.
So
No, no, that's fine. We, we good because the person, the problem is not this person. Problem is the other person.
Question, pardon me.
Sure.
So we're, if we, if we know that we're having this issue with, um, the individual that you stated, it's been unfair, we've, every handicap request that we've gotten through this council, we make it a point to issue a statement as, as a body that the handicap plaque or handicap signage is not, does not mean that it doesn't need it to that address. It's anyone with a handicap, um, ticket or sticker.
You're correct.
So why has this not been addressed with that individual?
Well, I, I gonna refer to the mayor of the city of Lawrence, actually. He's a, a one of the most active person with the mayors, with the, with the mayors. He's, he's one of the right-hand side of the mayor. And that person, that everybody knows him here, everybody, he had put a, he put a, a, a number on his handicap parking that is only belong to the house. Of course, it's enforcement, it's, it's a selective enforcement of the, of, of those type of issues. It's like, that's the problem. And that's why I'm so like disappointed. That's why I was a little crazy looking for the address to see if it was the house right, right next to it, and it is. About yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, I was under the assumption when we approve, uh, these handicap parkings that they are approved at the ordinance level, uh, based. Don't, isn't there something within ordinance that, um, if there's already one in place or there's nothing in ordinance, so there could be multiple handicap in a given street?
As per the state law, it's one per household.
One per household?
And then if it is multiple household, it's multiple parking spot that we can allow it. But the problem is that is that does, that does handicap parking doesn't belong to the household. It belongs to anybody that had a blocker. Mean, which means that somebody from New Hampshire with a blocker can park on there because they are disabled. And ADA, uh, laws are at the na, national level. Not just, uh, at the local level or the state level. So no parking, no handicap parking belong to one in specific. It belong to anybody that have a blocker, especially if they from Massachusetts. I mean, I put, I go, I went to the extreme to going out of state. But I mean, if it is Massachusetts, I mean, I'm assuming that yes. So going back to your question, yes, it belong to anybody. That parking spot belong to anybody that have a parking, that have a parking blocker. And, uh, parking space is requested, uh, and it's allow only one per household, uh, essentially.
Um, I wanna direct my question to the chairman of the ordinance committee. Uh, based on your experience, have, is this the first time we're seeing, uh, uh, this type of request where there is already a handicap, uh, blocker that has been assigned to a, a given street? Or have we've seen, is this common where we've all have multiple, um, m, multiple handicap signs, um, on the same street?
So I've not done any analysis of the question, so you're asking me for my
I just wanted to go, this is an outlier.
So my recollection is that it's not, to me, it would not be in, there are streets of various sizes. You asked me if it's on street. So depending on the size of the street, it would, would not be, I would not, I would not be shocked or surprised to see multiple, more than one handicap parker, parking a pla, a sign on a street. I think we can go through our city and we will, we can notice it. Does it happen a lot? I don't know if it happens a lot. Are you talking about a block? Um, I think we're adopting more and more handicap parking spaces, so the likelihood of us having more than one on a, in a block is starting to increase. So I don't, I can't give you straight answer because I just haven't done the analysis of whether or not there's how many or where they are. I, I would, I would, I would call to your attention the letter that we got for document number three sixty-nine twenty-five. I think we've already voted in favor of it. But for three sixty-nine twenty-five, the person's picture, person's request is on here. She explains why she wants a handicap parking. Uh, the police department went to the house, uh, did a review. We asked for an independent review to give us their recommendation. They came back and they recommended that, that we went ahead. We typically, unless we get details that provide something to the contrary, we typically, not a hundred percent, would follow the police department's recommendation as a neutral third party at looking into it. So, um, that's what happened in this particular case. I, I have, I have no idea what the council president is talking about. I don't know what's going on next door to his house. I don't know who lives next door to his house. I don't think I wanna know who's living next door to his house. Uh, but I, I, I can assure you, at least from my perspective, this vote has nothing to do with, it has everything to do with the police department recommendation.
No, and, and let's be clear, this is not the issue. This person needs it. And I'm pretty sure that the person requested it was because he was not allowed to use the other one. Because it was name it and label. And I encourage you to pass by, uh, ninety-one Greener Street and you will see how it says. Ninety-one Greener Street. And it's unfortunately that that happened throughout because we keep on even sending memo from the city attorney. Uh, and I think that on the website, we have that memo from the city attorney that says that, uh, handicap parking doesn't belong to the individual that requested. Instead, it would belong to anybody that have the blocker. And on the ordinance committee, uh, that's, that's, it's a kinda like, uh, it's like, uh, a comment that come up every time, basically. So making sure that people understand the rules. But like I said, is, this is more than just the rule. It's about all the things that I mentioned previously. Well, let's move on. Let's, let's keep on going with a couple of the things that we have here.
But Council President, if I may?
Sure.
Can the district council send a, a, an email, uh, to the appropriate department explaining, uh, the situation? Because every time we, uh, talk about handicap parking, we mention, uh, that it belongs to anyone every time we, uh, talk about handicap parking, we mention, uh, that it belongs to anyone in the street. So, having an exclusive handicap parking is, it's, I'm not gonna call it illegal, but it sounds illegal.
It is illegal.
Okay, so my suggestion is to ask the city council district to send an email to make this complaint official, because I think you have a valid concern, thank you.
Uh, to you, uh, Mr. President.
Councila Le- uh.
Uh, Councila Levy is on, uh, through some, and Councila Bates.
I know.
I know, I know that part. Uh, I want to clarify that point, because the issue is not the person request the handicap.
That's all.
You mentioned another case not relating with this item tonight. So, I want to miss, make clear on that part, because Ms. Maria.
She's not the issue whatsoever.
I know that, I want to be clear.
Not the issue whatsoever, as I'm aware of that, I said.
We talked about the item, the three sixty-nine, I don't want my constituent listen to us tonight and they.
No, no, she, she talks a little bit.
Yeah.
It's absolutely fine, I mean, uh, like I said, I'm pretty sure that she have requested because she wasn't able to use the other one that is gonna be right next to her. Uh, even though she had a blocker. And we have a, a, a copy of her blocker here.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, Councilor, let's press any info.
I just, I, I don't mean to drag this, but I just thought of this, and it's important to state. Council Marmal, if, if you two.
Oh, ten, okay, now, most of motion to pass ten, I have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council, Councila Reyes?
Yes.
Councila Marmal. Council, um, Council Del Rosario was noted as absent, Councila Luzon. Councila La Plant.
Yes.
Councila Levy.
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante.
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez.
Put on the affirmative.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilor, say something.
Thank you quickly, I, I, Council Marmal, it sounds like there is an actual concern, um, and a violation. I want to publicly, on the record, caution you on how to proceed and make sure that you involve, um, I'm gonna suggest the city clerk on all communication, because the individual mentioning was, did, um, was the campaign manager of your opponent, and I don't want you trying to do the right thing to come back to you saying that you're doing it because of retaliation or X, Y, and Z. So, I am publicly saying this, because it will, it might happen, I'm putting this on the record, and I'm looking out for you, Council Marmal.
If I may, Councilor, I mean, I voted in favor of it.
No, it's, because the issue is not the item.
No, 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 I know, and I, I, I want to add that this request would not be, it, it would not even be part of the agenda had the ninety-one Greenwood handicap placard be an issue in terms of trying to privatize, um, that, that placard. So, I know, uh, through you, Council President, um, our chairman from the ordinance committee, I am very fami- familiar with how passionate you are when we speak of parking and how we're creating a president. Um, and I just feel and see based on the influx of the constant, you know, requests as to what is that, you know, how is that going to affect us in the future in terms of, you know, I don't know if this is something that we might have to address at a later point in time. Um, whether it's adding or adjusting our own ordinances in terms of speaking to multiple placards within this same street, I was under the impression that, um, they had to be a number of feet away from one versus the other. But I have learned today that it's one per household, so if there's five consecutive households within the, the same block, there could be five handicap placards, um.
Yes, they have.
So, okay, I learn something new every day, and that's.
We have, we have that on, on Bradford Street, actually, we have, uh, at least three over there, three different neighbors. And they, but they use it, though, that's, that's important thing. All right, we moving, we moving on, councilors, let's, let's take a motion for item, uh, two seventy twenty-five.
This is handicap parking at, uh, two eighty-eight High Street, uh, make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, can I have a second? Properly second discussion. I hear none, uh, please, madam, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councila Levy.
Yes.
Councila La Plant.
Yes.
Councila Luzon. Council Del Rosario is noted as absent. Councila Marmal.
Yes.
Councila Reyes.
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante.
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez.
Put on the affirmative, item, uh, three seventy-one, three seventy-one twenty-five.
Uh, this is, uh, a motion for handicap parking at forty Albion Street, and make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, properly second discussion.
Discussion.
Council La Plant.
Just real quick, um, yes to my colleague from District D's earlier comments, yes, there, we, just because it comes before us and somebody asked for it, doesn't mean we're required to go ahead and, and provide a handicap parking, we are not required by law. We can reject, uh, a, 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 a request, uh, for a permit, for handicap parking permit, for, for whatever reason we decide that we want to do it for, it could be space issues, whatever, whatever the issues are, so I just want to make sure that, that, uh, that was at least addressed, thank you, Council President.
And we have done it before. But the request is on a, on a, on another violation, perhaps, like a pump. Uh, all right, councilors, uh, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councila Reyes. Councila Marmal.
Yes.
Council Del Rosario is noted as absent, Councila Luzon. Council La Plant.
Yes.
Councila Levy.
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante. Council President Rodriguez.
Put on the affirmative, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please read the notice for item, um, three forty-five and, three forty-five twenty-five, and also for three seventy-three twenty-five. Childcare parking at three thirty-six Howard Street, and childcare parking for eighty Con- uh, College Street.
Document number, uh, three forty-five twenty-five and three seventy-three twenty-five. The purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the city of Lawrence be further amended by adding the following subparagaphs to section ten, point thirty-six, point four five zero of the municipal code daycare drop-off zone in their proper alphabetical order. Howard Street, west side from a point five hundred and eight feet south of Plishway to a point five hundred and twenty-eight feet south of Plishway, and document number three seventy-three twenty-five, Coolidge Street, southeast side from a point fifty-three feet southwest of Belknap Street to a point seventy-three feet southwest of Belknap Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Uh, public, uh, public hearing is now open, anybody from the public that wishes to speak. I see none, public hearing is now closed, councilors, what's the motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, uh, for item, three seventy-three, uh,
uh, three forty-five.
Three forty-five twenty-five.
In Walton Block or in the middle?
That's one.
Okay, yes.
Uh, item three forty-five twenty-five. Here, I have a motion.
Uh, motion to approve.
Motion to approve, can I have a second?
Okay.
Properly second discussion.
Discussion.
Council La Plant.
I just want to make sure I, if I heard the correct, the, the clerk read it correctly, it, could you read the address for three forty-five twenty-five, please?
Thirty-six Howard Street.
I heard, I, that's not what I heard from the clerk, I just want to confirm that. I could be mistaken.
When I read it, I don't state the street number as part of the public notice, I, I, I read the document number, so the document number is three forty-five twenty-five, Howard Street, west side.
Okay.
From a point five hundred and eight feet south of Plishway to point two hundred, five hundred and twenty-five feet south of Plishway, I think maybe.
It's close to that address, but it's not in the address.
Yeah, I, I thank you.
Even though at some point, we said that we were gonna be kind of like add the address for that, uh, for the search of it. But I mean, uh, we can, we can go back on that.
When I, yeah.
I know, but in parentheses.
Yeah.
Kind of like for the item. Because eventually, when you search for it, you won't be able to find it with the dimensions.
When we search for, I search for by the document name, which has the address in it. Yeah.
Gotcha. All right, uh, there is an item on the table, uh, there is a motion to approve, properly second discussion. I hear none, uh, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councila Levy.
Yes.
Councila La Plant.
Yes.
Councila Luzon. Council Del Rosario is noted as absent, Councila Marmal. Councila Reyes.
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante.
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez.
Put on the affirmative, motion carries, can I get a motion to, uh, uh, for a motion for three, three seventy-three twenty-five?
Motion to approve.
The motion to approve.
Second.
Properly second discussion.
It's two seventy-three, correct?
Three seventy-three, yes. Uh, motion to approve, properly second discussion. I hear none, uh, madam clerk.
I like, I like to make a motion.
Council La Plant.
This is odd, I don't often do this, so we may want your seats. I did declare this to make, ask if we can declare this an emergency, school's already started over there, and, and they're looking for relief now.
So, you, you looking to wait the thirty days?
This is a day.
I'm sorry, I meant emergency.
Yes.
This is, this is, this is community day charter school, right?
Uh, no.
No.
This is a, a childcare parking.
And I'm not gonna make that ridiculous motion.
Councila Reyes, like, what we need it?
Yeah, I need it, I want to do that, I asked it to motion.
Right.
Like, I loved leaving the thirty days.
Yes.
Childcare, three seventy-three, uh, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Mercy.
So, this is document, uh, three seventy-three twenty-five to approve, it's, uh, Councila Reyes?
Yes.
Councila Marmal.
Yes.
Council Del Rosario was noted as absent, Councila Luzon. Council La Plant.
Yes.
Councila Levy.
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante.
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez.
I put on the affirmative, madam clerk, please read the, read the, uh, the notice for item two seventy-three twenty-five, Hampshire Street drop-off on west, uh, west side between Bradford to Haver, uh, Haver Street, and, uh, this is for the drop-off and pickup for that, uh, community day charter school.
Purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the city of Lawrence be further amended by adding to section ten, point three six, point three three zero of the municipal code bus stops, taxi cab stands, ambulance stands, and service zones the following paragraph in the proper alphabetical order. Document number two seventy-three dash twenty-five, Hampshire Street, west side from Bradford Street to Haver Street, school days seven AM to eight AM, and two thirty to five thirty PM. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? There is none, uh, public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a motion, councilor?
Second.
Properly second.
Will the, uh, will.
And wait the.
Will the sponsor be willing to waive the thirty days?
Yes, you were in thirty days, that's part of the motion, madam clerk.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions, councilors? I do have a question, so I'm gonna pass the call over.
The call of so much, Council President.
Well, this, this, uh, this area right here, uh, I have worked with different people from the school to be able to get the drop-off, uh, away from Haver Street. And, and this, this, this solution that is presented here, i- it is doing that. Even though, um, I have safety concern about the drop-off and pickup on Hampshire Street due to traffic. And I'm gonna press my concern, uh, and trust me, uh, I just want to put it up here for the record, because something might happen. And if it happen, it happen, it's gonna happen to, to one of the most vulnerable. The safety concern that I have is that when, when, uh, when kids tend to, get out of a vehicle, they go out through the passenger side. And when we think about this location and the drop-off for this location, we have live traffic on Hampshire, on Hampshire Street going up. And if the kids get out on the, on the backside and get out through that, through that door, because by default, that's how they act, because they're kids and they're adults as well. They're gonna be exposed and be, have a pump, point of conflict of, of conflict point between live traffic. A kid going to the street and, and potentially having a, an accident. So, I'm very concerned about, about this, uh, about this drop-off pickup. And it is, and this, this has been done not thinking of every step. The, the, the charter school, uh, what we have done in the past is that we changed Bradford Street from one way to two ways to be able to, to put the pickup and drop-off on Bradford Street. Why? Because on Bradford Street, uh, it already has proven that it's a safer street to do pickup and drop-off, why? Because the other charter school that is on the other side, on Bradford and West, they do the pickup and drop-off on there. Because of the Bellicini that is right in the middle, they do the pickup and drop-off on, on Bradford Street. And the fact that we changed that street to a two-way street, it was, and it's wide enough is because we can accommodate uh, the pickup and drop-off on that occasion. But there is a convenient situation for the school, and trust me, I support the school big time. I support that school huge time. Uh, because I know that they are doing, doing, uh, a lot of good things for the kids. But essentially, it is, it is, it is unfortunately that we're not thinking about those specific, those specific point. I talked to the DPW, the, the, to the, uh, city engineer about that. We have, we agree to disagree on that topic. Say that is, that is, but I gonna, I wanted to bring them up to the, bring them up to the council.
Now, to the class action lawsuit against.
Um, so I wanted to bring them up to the council. Another concern that I have is that we have that, uh, the firefight, the firefight department right down on Low Wall on Hampshire, that this is they getting, getting in and out. And if at some point, we have the queue, the traffic queuing all the way uh, to that street, that's also a potential, a potential, uh, safety concern uh, due to the fact that, uh, the fire department might have an issue uh, with all the backing up traffic. I get the point that right now, they are doing a drop-off on, on, on Haver, and that queue all goes all the way to, to Broadway. That's a, that's, that's passing Franklin, going all the way to Broadway, and that's when the people start lining up. And it is, it is bad, but I mean, I don't think the solution is Hampshire. I, I'm not gonna vote in favor of this, I'm, I gonna, I'm not gonna vote against it, I gonna vote present due to the fact that it's not because I'm against the solution that I presenting. Oh, yes, I'm against the solution that I presenting, but I want the, the, the school to to have a safe drop-off and pickup and, and, uh, and, 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 and that, that could rep- this could represent potential issue in the future. I hope that, I hope that on round, but I just want to bring them up.
Thank you, Council President, any further comments, questions, concerns?
I would just add.
Council, um, Council La Plant.
Yeah, thanks, so I would just add, uh, one thing, which is that we received in our packets communication, as the Council President has alluded to, from the city engineer who's in support of it. We've also received documentation from the, uh, the, a police department official who sees the need for, for correcting the excessive, uh, blockage of traffic. And of course, we also, and, and also have something from the proponent, um, of the measure, which is, uh, Mr. Scott Barlow, the maintenance, uh, director with the community group, who again is, is, not only he's saying to us this would be helpful in alleviating the problem that they're facing, but also points out that there is something similar, um, so he says here, uh, signage, uh, similar to what is at Esperanza Academy, uh, looking for a school sign zone on Ha- on Hampshire Street that he thinks would be helpful as well. So, I just want, I'm just calling to your attention, there is documentation in our packet, in support of it, I'm not diminishing the Council President's comments on it, he is everybody, he's articulate. Council President speaks in a way that, uh, that is very convincing, um, and I think we should listen to him. Uh, but I feel confident, based on the information that I've received from these three folks as well. Um, and as Dan Rivera once said in the council chambers, let's give this a shot, see if it works, and if it doesn't, we can always fix it and try to figure something else out. And they're gonna know pretty soon, I think the school's gonna know whether or not this is working or not working.
Uh, could you, and also, I want to add it, uh, the whole packet, they explain, uh, the children is not get out alone, alone. They have to stop dedicated to waiting for the children, and, uh, the idea to the drop-off is to, to have the space available when the bus came, because sometimes they have parking, park, a car parking there is not allowed, the bus need to parking in the middle. See, they have the space available, they can do to the sidewalk, not in the middle of the street.
Thank you, we have a motion on the table, it was properly seconded, madam clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councila Levy?
Yes.
Councila Plant?
Yes.
Councila Luzon? Councila Del Rosario is noted as absent, Councila Mamo?
Yes.
Councila Reyes?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante? Oh, I'm sorry, Council President Rodriguez?
Present.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Right, uh, we going, uh, finish up with public hearing, so we going top of the agenda, that is, uh, ordinance committee reports. There is no communication, give me one second, please. No, we haven't finished with the public hea, no. Yes, we did finish with the public hearings. All right, um, all right, uh, no communication from the mayor, city officials, or the city attorney, committee reports, we finish up with the budget finance committee, housing committee, there is no report, ordinance committee, uh, Councilor La Plan and the Chair of the ordinance committee.
Just before I start, there's a lot, and, uh, we're trying to clean up our, uh, our agenda items, uh, I realize as I'm going, there most, a lot of these are withdrawals, just because there's been no action, or some of these have actually gone up already, have been approved, um, and, uh, there's no easy way to determine whether they have or haven't, so, so, um.
Let's take it as a block.
What I'm going to do, I'm hearing rumblings about a block, which we could do.
Yeah, we can read it all first.
Okay, so, um, which is fine, so, um, these are all mo, these are all items to, to be withdrawn, I'll read the items. Is that what you want me to do?
Yes, please.
Eighty-three, no, I gotta, anybody need water, cause it's gonna take a while? No?
Uh.
Eighty-three twenty-three, ordinance created five foot driveway setback, one oh two eighty-three, Hall and Nav, one way from Hayborough Street to Yale Terrace, one oh three twenty-three, Congress Street, one way from Olive Ave to Hayborough Street, one oh four twenty-three, Congress Street, no parking anytime, West Street of Congress Street, from Olive Ave to Hayborough Street, two forty-two twenty-three, fifty-nine seventy-one, Merrimack Street zoning amendment, three oh seven twenty-three, resident parking, Shogwell Court, three twelve twenty-three, resident parking, Reservoir Terrace, three twenty-seven twenty-three, transient vendor license, three, uh, for Big Beautiful Wings, uh, three twenty-eight twenty-three, preach the word of God, September twenty-ninth and thirtieth, twenty twenty-three at Manchester Street Park, three thirty-seven twenty-three, proposal of a hundred dollar fee for all agenda items requiring a public hearing, three fifty-nine twenty-three, disclosure of municipal employee acting on election day for the general, general election, Dorelani Gutierrez, three sixty-three twenty-three, transfer of taxi medallion number nineteen, Merrimack Taxi Company Incorporated, from A Hernandez to El Vasquez, three seventy-one twenty-three, water fountain to remember all Lawrence, Mass, Vietnam veterans who served their country, three seventy-six twenty-three, install underground facilities on Amesbury Street, four oh one twenty-three, creation of a hundred and fifty dollar ordinance publication fee for on-site street signage, four seventeen twenty-three, ordinance to reclaim city-owned real property when buyer fails to fulfill restrictive covenants or conditions, four twenty-one twenty-three, handicap parking, one twenty-eight Hancock Street, four fifty-one twenty-three, modify the TIF for Unitex Company, four sixty-three, I'm sorry, four sixty-one twenty-three, Essex Street, bike lane project and allowance for left turns on Essex Street eastbound, four sixty-three twenty-three, request for enforcement of declaratory judgment regarding three forty-one South Broadway, four sixty-five twenty-three, home rule petition to reduce municipal voting age in Lawrence, four seventy-six twenty-three, remove handicap parking sign at nineteen Cedar Street. Two more, uh, four seventy-three twenty-three, remove handicap parking sign at forty-five Delphi Street, three twenty-four twenty-five, resident parking, Bay State Road, West Side, sixty feet. That's it.
All right, Councilors, we have all those items to be, uh, withdrawn, any objection? I hear none, send a motion to take it as a block.
Motion to take as a block?
It's a motion to take all, all those as a block, properly second discussion. Uh, Madam Clerk, please, uh, call the roll.
To take it as a block, uh, Councila Reyes? Councila Mamo?
Yes.
Councila Del Rosario is noted as absent, Councila Luzon? Councila Plant?
Yes.
Councila Levy?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
I vote on the affirmative, Council La Plan, am I taking item, uh, three eighty-two, three eighty-three, three eighty-four, three eighty-five, and three eighty-six as a block?
Let's read them all, yes, I don't mind, three eighty-two twenty-five, handicap parking sixty, sixty-nine Berkeley Street, three eighty-three twenty-five, handicap parking, forty-six Cross Street, three eighty-four twenty-five, handicap parking, one twenty-two Myrtle Street, three eighty-five twenty-five, handicap parking, eight Osgood Street, three eighty-six twenty-five, handicap parking, twenty-three, twenty-eighty Street, apartment one.
All right, uh, Councilors, uh, can you hear a motion to order a public hearing on those?
Motion to order a public hearing?
And take it as a block?
Motion to.
Take it as a block and order a public hearing?
Motion to take the items as a block?
I should probably say this came out of the ordinance committee, all with favorable recommendations, just so you know. All right, there we go.
All right, uh, it's a motion to, take it as a block and order a public hearing for item just mentioned. Uh, can you hear a second? Properly second discussion. I hear none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councila Reyes? Councila Mamo?
Yes.
Councila Del Rosario is noted as absent, Councila Luzon? Councila Plant?
Yes.
Councila Levy?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
I vote on the affirmative, uh, uh, motion carries, item four twenty-five, four twenty-six, and four twenty-seven, um, by, uh, Chair of the Way of Finance, uh, Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Ordnance Committee sent these documents out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, document uh, four twenty-five twenty-five, remove handicap parking at eighteen Fulton Street, four twenty-six twenty-five, remove handicap parking at one seventy High Street, and four twenty-seven twenty-five, remove handicap parking at forty-three Ames Street, that's the motion.
Motion is to remove those, uh, those parking at those locations, uh, Councilors, any, any questions? Can you hear a second? Properly second, any questions? All right, I'll call the questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councila Levy?
Yes.
Councila Plant?
Yes.
Councila Luzon? Councila Del Rosario is noted as absent, Councila Marmal?
Yes.
Councila Reyes?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
I vote on the affirmative, motion carries, item, uh, four twenty-three twenty-five.
Servicio Evangelistico, Campino Common, November eighth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven AM to five PM. The ordinance committee sent this up with a favorable recommendation, that's the motion.
The motion is to approve, properly second discussion. I hear none, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councila Reyes? Councila Mamo?
Yes.
Councila Del Rosario is noted as absent, Councila Luzon?
Yes.
Councila Plant? Councila Levy?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
I vote on the affirmative. All right, we done with, um, ordinance committee, personal committee, there is no report, public safety committee, no report, economic development, no report, committee of the whole, there is no report, all business, we have, um, item four twenty-five twenty-five, we have nobody for that item at this point. Um, we will, can I get a, can I get a motion to send correspondence to, for the next, for the next meeting? Uh, to have, uh, the, the planning director, Daniel, Dan McCarthy, to come over?
So moved.
There's a motion on the table.
Second.
Properly second, uh, questions, there's none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councila Levy?
Yes.
Councila Plant? Councila Luzon? Councila Del Rosario is noted as absent, Councila Marmal?
Yes.
Councila Reyes?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
I vote on the affirmative, motion carries, item is for, uh, four fourteen? Four fourteen twenty-five, vote to confirm location for that, uh, future city council meetings, for the city, uh, city council rules, number two. So, Councilors, I'm looking for a motion to have the next meeting, finally, and hopefully the last one, to be, uh, hold at this location. Can I, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
It's a motion to approve, uh, properly second discussion, I give you an update on that. Uh, due to the fact that we're in an election, the, the, the chambers was used for early boarding, and then, uh, final, um, the, nobody was, um, this project has been done locally, uh, and nobody was available to work, uh, during that time, and, uh, I mean, during that time because of the early boarding, and now after the elections, they were not working on that project, today they reconvene and yesterday, and they, they start working, hopefully, uh, they finish up all the work that need to be done, the delivery for the desk, uh, it's gonna happen within, uh, uh, two weeks, uh, if, if not a little longer, no more than three weeks, to be safe and install. And, um, everything, uh, everything else, uh, will be finished by the first meeting of December, hopefully, I hope. Um, we've been pushing for that project to, to finish, uh, ASAP. And it's been a lot of inconvenience, so we apologize for everybody that, uh, have going through this, including the Councilors, we apologize. And, uh, anybody from the public that is, um, been, uh, going through the situation. Uh, Councilors, now, Madam Clerk, any questions? Council, Council Vice President Infante?
Thank you, I, I have, um, personnel, uh, later, I'll be, I'll be scheduling two personnel meetings, um, that are going to happen in person. Is this the appropriate time, I know this is, uh, for one meeting, but would we have to vote to have the personnel meetings here as well?
The problem with having it here is, is that they need to set up all that equipment, and that will take them three hours. Uh, I will suggest to have those meetings on Zoom. Can we, there is a way to go into the secretary section on Zoom?
I would rather not have that on Zoom.
Yeah, there is. I know, but I mean, it's no, it's no, it's, it's, it will be extremely difficult to have it here, as per the school department. I wanted to have those meetings here.
About the library?
The setup. We don't have it. The mobile setup, the school has it. But, uh, when it comes to the secretary section, I just, we will, we will have that available. Make sure that you request everybody to have the camera on.
Okay, all right.
All right, no problem, we went on, Council, Madam, Madam Chair, please call the roll.
Councila Reyes? Councila Marmal? Councila Del Rosario is noted as absent, Councila Luzon?
Yes.
Councila Plant?
Yes.
Councila Levy?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
I vote on the affirmative, thank you, Councilors. Uh, any table matters that would, uh, that wanna discuss today?
Nope.
Councilors, we have a new item that we need to discuss, uh, if the council would like to take this as an emergency. So, there is an item. What's that?
Oh, it was the one. You don't have the revised agenda, I'm sorry. It's a fund transfer of five hundred thousand dollars. I don't, yeah, it's a fund transfer of five hundred thousand dollars from ARPA to the.
Does anybody have the revised agenda? The revised agenda. So it's item four fifty twenty-five, fund transfer of five hundred thousand from ARPA funds to the Lawrence Food Resiliency Fund, Mayor Brian Edipain. It was a four, it was a hello, it's a five hundred?
Five hundred thousand dollars from ARPA funds to the Lawrence Food Resiliency Fund. Five hundred thousand. That's what he gave us, five hundred thousand, that's what he was writing, five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I don't, all right, Councilors.
Do you give it to the other one?
No. It's a five hundred thousand.
I'm sorry.
Give one second, represent.
What I had looked at was his email that said, as per the progress, I justify, move a five hundred thousand dollar transfer from ARPA funds to the Resiliency Fund. So that's what I had put, and then I didn't see this that says five hundred dollars, um. There's four hundred from here and two hundred from here, that doesn't add up to five hundred thousand. It's four hundred there, I think it's supposed to be one hundred there. But it.
Anyway, Councilors, there is a five hundred thousand dollars transfer from the remaining of the ARPA funds to that, uh, um, to that, uh, La, Lawrence Food, uh, Resiliency Funds. Um, so, Councilors, if, if the council decide, decide to, uh, take that, take this as an emergency, we can discuss it today. If it's not, we can send that over to committee, up to the council.
I'd like to send it to the committee.
Send to committee? Send to committee? All right, uh, to take it as an emergency, we need seven vote, we seven people here today. And, uh, uh, majority, it's a send to committee, we'll follow through. All right, we going to new business. So item four thirty-one twenty-five, authorization, authorization to spend six hundred and eighty thousand, thirty-eight dollars from Federal Department of Health and Human Services, uh, reach grant, this is going to the, uh, budget and finance committee. Item four thirty-two twenty-five, authorization to spend two hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-four, uh, dollars, formula grant, uh, for Executive Office of Orderless Affairs, that's going to the, uh, budget and finance committee. Item four thirty-three twenty-five, authorization, authorization, authorization to spend nine thousand dollars, fiscal year twenty twenty-six, title three grant, uh, from the Executive Office of, uh, Order Affairs, that's going to the, uh, budget and finance committee. Item, uh, four thirty-four twenty-five, appropriation transfer for four hundred thousand uh, from the stabilization reserve funds to legal services for litigation, that's going to the budget and finance committee. Item four thirty-five twenty-five, payment for prior years, uh, billed two hundred and nine dollars and seventy cents to Amazon invoice, that's going to the budget and finance committee. Uh, item four thirty-six twenty-five, extend contract for, um, eighty twelve, eighty twelve A with resources development teams, uh, for that, uh, team longer than three years, that's going to the budget and fin- but. Yeah, that's going to, uh, contract.
Budget, budget.
Go to ordinance.
Ordinance, yeah.
Orders, yeah.
Yeah, let's go to, or let's send that to ordinance. Item three thirty-seven, uh, twenty-five, handicap parking, uh, 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 handicap parking at one ninety-seven Crawford Street, that's going to ordinance committee. Item four thirty-eight twenty-five, handicap parking at forty-eight, forty-seven Albert Street, that's going to ordinance committee. Item four thirty-nine twenty-five, handicap parking at one fifty-five Wilder Street, that's going to ordinance committee. Item four forty-one twenty-five, remove of handicap parking located, located at two A West Street, that's going to ordinance committee. Item four forty twenty-five, handicap parking at eighty-seven Trenton Street, uh, not unit, uh, unit one is wrong, uh, Trenton Street, that's going to ordinance committee. Item, uh, four forty-two twenty-five, resident parking, Walter Street, that's going to, uh, ordinance committee. Item four forty-three twenty-five, childcare parking at eleven Platte Street, that's going to ordinance committee. Four forty, uh, four forty-five twenty-five, a fifteen minute parking located of sixty-four Berkeley Street, that's going to, uh, the ordinance committee. Four forty-five twenty-five, install a J O pole at, uh, on East Hayborough Street, near, uh, near Young Avenue, that's going to the ordinance committee. Item four forty-six twenty-five, install a J O pole on M Street, near Lower Street, that's going to the ordinance committee. There's more?
I don't know if you want that, four forty-seven is a school parking.
All right, item four forty-seven twenty-five, uh, school parking only on Chestnut Street, that's going to the ordinance committee. Item four forty-eight twenty-five, a school parking only in Chestnut Street, that's going to ordinance committee. Item four forty-nine twenty-five, a school parking only on Hayborough Street, that's going to the ordinance committee. They need to specify the time for this, with all those, all those item, because it's not throughout the whole day. Item four fifty twenty-five, uh, fund transfer for four hundred thousand dollars from ARPA funds to the Lawrence Food Resiliency Fund, that's going to the budget and finance committee. Item four forty-one twenty-five, review applicants and select appointees of the school committee members related to education, that's going to personal committee. Item four fifty-two twenty-five, review applicant and select appointees for, uh, for school committee members on the finance aspect, and that's going to that, um, um, personal committee. Item four fifty, four fifty-three twenty-five, review applicant and select appointees for school committee member related to legal section, and that's going to that, uh, personal committee. Uh, Councilors, now we're gonna entertain, uh, a specific date for, um, committees, ordinance.
Sure, it's a question, so, uh, to the clerk and through you, or both of you, do we have an expected date for the swearing-in ceremony for the?
Yes.
The at large, the, uh, Council of Light for District A, A, right, A.
Doing it right before, I don't need it.
No, 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 why?
Right before your next meeting, which would be on the eighteenth. You have a seven o'clock meeting, we would do a little swearing-in ceremony for him at six thirty, right before that.
That's gonna happen here?
Sure. When is, when is the vote certified for the election?
The tenth day is the fourteenth, so it's right before that too, so you're like going to-
Day's the fourteenth, I think.
Leave it to Friday. Monday is the seventeenth, we're gonna, hopefully, I haven't had a chance to even speak to the council yet, but to do a brief orientation on that Monday, and then have him sworn in on Tuesday, right before your meeting.
Because of the holiday, we typically, we typically would have the ordinance committee on a Tuesday, I don't know what else is happening, so.
You wanna have it on Monday?
Do we have time to do it on Monday? We have forty-eight hours, right? So it's all day, all day, Friday, all day, Monday. That gives us enough time for posting purposes? Can't do it, can you?
This is one-
She's gotta post it, like, pronto.
Friday, even if I post it now, if I went back and posted-
No, no, we won't have time.
You're not gonna get to forty-eight hours.
Can't do it Monday, right? So, I, I, I don't know what else is happening, so it's gonna be Wednesday, so.
No, Wednesday is personal.
Well, that's what I'm talking, so we don't have a lot of time. What time is personnel? I, 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 because we're jumping in on someone else's turf, I'm gonna work, I think we can work on somebody else's schedule, so.
Alright, let's, let's go personal first.
I think personnel, I, I think you, you should be fine, wait, no, 'cause, okay. Alright, personnel, we're gonna have two meetings, Wednesday and Thursday. At, I was originally thinking six, but to give you some time, Councila LaPlante, we're gonna have to start it at seven, because of limited time, both meeting, the first meeting.
You mean, you mean that ordinance gonna take place at six?
Yep.
Is that, that's enough time?
I'm looking at the agenda, it looks like there is enough time, if we just deal with what's here, I think we can get it, we usually start a meeting on time, which is, they're really good, my committee is really good, so I think we can get them by seven. And we will work hard, 'cause I don't want inconvenience to any other committees, we will, we'll zip through it to get it done by seven.
So you're gonna have two meetings, and you have fourteen, fourteen interviews?
Sixteen interviews. So eight, we're gonna do eight and eight.
So by the way, Councillors, we have sixteen people? Sixteen people to apply for the three position for the school, for the school committee, for the record.
Kinda good, I think, isn't it? Can you, can you tell us how many for each, each section?
Yes, go ahead.
You have four applied for the legal, six applied for the education, and six applied for the finance.
Are we going to, are we going to interview all of them, or are we going to review the resume? And then to take some of them and interview those that are the final?
The, the personal director will be checking to see if there is any, anybody that doesn't qualify for those positions. What I mean is, perhaps, if somebody thought that it was a clerk positions and apply for this position, and then it won't, it won't work, I mean. But I mean, they will check on that, they will, they are, they are the experts on that.
Did note that one of the applicants was a candidate for office who won, so I'm gonna presume that he would withdraw, he couldn't qualify for both, so that will knock one off for you.
Yeah, one, you will be receiving a letter for one of the applicants, because due to the fact I wasn't elected.
I don't know.
Yep, yep.
So you have fifteen?
So fifteen, yeah. I also recommend, in, in preparation of this meeting, the, I think it was Madam Clerk that sent a memo on behalf of the HR department to the full council regarding the process of how this is going to go, so please, if you're on the personnel committee, please make sure to read that entire document, so we are all on the same page of what is expected of us, and that we are following HR procedures before, that we are, that we are aware of HR procedures before we, we, we come into this, this meeting.
And, and what the Council Vice President is referring to is that the personal director prepare a, a, a process, a documentation, and send it to the clerk, spelling up the entire process, so how it should go when it comes to the hiring for this position. So they provide that to the, to the committee, and will follow.
I think Madam Clerk sent it to the whole council, full council.
They'll follow, the committee will follow those steps. Alright, we have two meeting for personal, which is on Wednesday at seven PM? Wednesday and Thursday?
Wednesday and Thursday at seven, yes, because then budget would have to be Thursday at six.
Thursday at six, so budget Thursday at six.
Ordinance.
And ordinance is at-
Sixty o'clock on Wednesday.
Wednesday at six PM. Anything else?
And I hope, Mr. Del Rosario, I'm not sure if he's gone for the week, 'cause it's Veterans Day, I'm not sure what his schedule is, so. Fingers crossed that we have a quorum, so we might, if we don't, we might have to call-
But he's gonna go through Zoom.
It's gonna be through Zoom, yeah.
Yeah.
We have to call the Council President if he's away, I don't know what his schedule is.
That's fine. Just let me know ahead of time, and if he's not able to join through Zoom. Alright, I think we're good on the committees? Anything else, any other committee? Alright, we're moving on.
So it was decided when we're gonna swear? The council of District A?
That has been discussed, and that, and that Councilor Let, Franklin Miguel Francisco already knows when he's gonna be running. Alright, at this point, I entertain a motion to adjourn, if there's anything else before we go. Alright, motion to adjourn.
Second?
Can I have a second?
Roll call.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councila Reyes? Councila Marmo?
Yes.
Councila Del Rosario is noted as absent, Councila Luzon? Councila LaPlante?
Yes.
Councila Levy?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
I'm the affirmative, thank you so much.
Thank you.